Perfect, thank you.
Feels like the old days. Yeah, this is nice.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I call to order the interview work session of the Manassas Park Governing Body for May 26, 2021. First, we have our usual statement. Per the General Assembly's approval of the Governor's amendments to the biennial budget, the Governing Body may now meet electronically without a quorum actually assembled in a single location and without the in-person Governing Body members voting on the participation of those who are remoting in. The following benchmarks for the meeting this evening have been met. First, the Governor has declared a state of emergency for the current COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with Code of Virginia. Second, the declared emergency makes it impractical or potentially unsafe for the Governing Body to assemble in a single location, and guidance from state and federal government support this determination. Therefore, the Governing Body will be meeting with various members participating electronically through go-to-meeting. Third, the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the Governing Body. Fourth, the Governing Body will make available a recording or transcript of the meeting on its website in accordance with Code of Virginia. Fifth, notice has been and will continue to be provided to the public using available methods. Lastly, we have made and will continue to make arrangements for public access through electronic means, including the ability to comment. Those participating electronically is Vice Mayor Banks. Those participating in person are Councilmember Laura Hampton, Councilmember Daryl Moore, Councilmember Haseeb Javed, Councilmember Yessi Amaya, Councilmember Alana Mensing, and Mayor Jeanette Rishel. Okay, next, we have approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to assume Preston approves. He's frozen. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We have an agenda. Okay, for the benefit of the folks at home, on a procedural note, these interviews are for the purpose of filling two school board terms that will be expiring on June 30. We will have as many rounds of questions as we have time for. Each round will consist of a Governing Body member asking one question, and then after the answer, we will move on so that we can have as many rounds as possible. Our first applicant is Ms. Stacy Fleming. Would you like to come up and have a seat? Welcome you, and we thank you for stepping up to want to serve the city. Much appreciated. We invite you to give a brief opening statement, and please limit your remarks to three minutes, and Keith will be the timekeeper.
Thank you for having me. My name is Stacy Fleming. I've lived in Manassas Park since 1999. I have three sons, one of which who's attended Manassas Park Middle School and is currently attending Manassas Park High School. My other two children attend All Saints Catholic School, but will be attending Manassas Park Middle School and High School next year. And they are both very excited, very excited. So I would like to join the school board to support our schools and work with the school board, the administration, and the City Council. To that end, for... Sorry. I want to see more of our budget be more impactful at the student level. I feel that the budget currently, the way it's been presented, that we haven't been able to really see impact at the students. I'd like to see more focus on the one size that doesn't fit all education model, that there isn't one path to success. We have a variety of different types of students with varying education levels. My three boys in particular. I have one student who's a special ed student, but he's also in AP classes. And Manassas Park has done a wonderful job accommodating him. I have another student who's also another special ed student, and then another one who does fine. So I would like to see that we present options to our students that have paths to success that it's not just through college. So I want to see how we can make our budget and funding to be more impactful through teacher retention as well. I think that we get students in, and we get teachers in, and they get comfortable with one another, and then the teachers end up leaving. So my students... My son has had several teachers. He's loved. They've come from Boeing, they've come from Lockheed, they've come from other states, Ohio, Pennsylvania, and they ultimately end up leaving for various reasons. It's not because of the administration. It's because they also don't have roots here. They don't set their families up here. So I would like to see us offer more teacher benefits as well. I'd also like to see curriculum expansion, so we can offer more classes, varying types of classes, whether it's automotive, cosmetology, plumbing, electrical, whether those classes are supported through our local businesses with internships. But I would like to see that expanded. I was raised in Fairfax County schools as well, and we had a lot of different types of classes. Now, I know that we have a limited budget, and so that's hard to do. But now that we've been through COVID, there's a lot of online opportunities. Okay? And if we can start setting up... Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, moving on to questions, and I'll begin the questioning. I think this is... My question, I believe, is important to the future working relationship between the city and the schools.
Okay.
It's about communication and cooperation, particularly for issues like financial best practices and for remaining compliant with Virginia law. So my question is, what can you do personally to help improve communication and cooperation between city and schools?
Okay, so the school board and the city?
Yes.
I believe that the budget development needs to be presented early and early on with the objectives tied to that budget. And I think the objectives need to be agreed upon with the city and with the school, or at least communicated. And so the vision is a common vision, not just with the school board, but the city also shares that vision. Because I don't think they can support monetarily a vision that they haven't been privy to or they're not on board with, or maybe even in some ways been a part of developing. So I do believe in teamwork. I do believe in coming together and having a common ground, because we come to you. The school board comes to you and says, this is what we need. This is the amount that we're going to need to accomplish this vision. Well, that vision, if you have it as well, you'll understand it, and you'll understand if you say, well, we can't... We can't give you this much, but we can give you this much. Okay, well, then this part of the vision is not going to be accomplished. Or we make trade-offs. Or we plan out and say, okay, well, you know what? We're going to do a phased approach, and we're going to be able to accomplish this, but this is going to take a little bit longer. So I do believe in teamwork. I do believe in compromise.
Thank you. Councilmember Amaya.
I just have one simple question. What school did you go to in Fairfax?
I went to Lee High School.
Okay.
And I also went to... Well, it's not Lee anymore. I don't know the name, honestly. And Lake Braddock. I went to Lake Braddock as well.
Thank you.
That's it for now.
Councilmember Moore.
Well, first of all, welcome, Ms. Fleming. I appreciate your presence here this evening, and thank you for joining us. The one question I have for this first round is specifically, please, how would you close the opportunity gap in the district?
Opportunity gap amongst our student population?
Yes.
Okay, that's... I guess that speaks to the more than one path to success and also offering opportunity just... Not just the college path. There's more than one path. Plumbing, electrical, all of those have different degrees. Students need to be aware of what those are. My son doesn't even... I mean, a lot of the times, doesn't even know what the college path is. He knows some, he knows the basics, but we have that down pat. That the path to colleges is fairly well laid out, but what's the path to get a plumbing certification? What's the path? Do our counselors know what those paths are? I don't know. And those things need to be communicated, and it needs to be accepted, that this is a path to happiness, which is success. And I think that needs to be emphasized.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Javed.
Good evening. My question is in regards to, I guess, what's your thoughts on policing in our school districts? And should there be more emphasis or investments in our... In counselors, and psychologists, and therapists in our school system? I guess it's a two-part question.
Policing? I don't know. I mean, that sounds a little ominous to me, honestly, but I like that counselor and the therapist idea. So that I'm on board with, but the policing thing's... But I'll tell you, my son invited to his drive-by 16th birthday party Officer Braun. Yeah, he came by and... Because that's who my son ate lunch with every day. So he's the one that my son would ask. You know, he had trouble with a librarian, and he went to him and said, what do I do? How do I work this? And he helped him. So it's not so ominous. I mean, it sounds ominous, but I will say that that was my son's friend. And... But therapists and counselors, absolutely. I do... I think they help. I think they will help with that path to success. I think they will help communicate that. It can be academic counselors, therapists to help students steer them in an emotional direction, because sometimes that overtakes the academic goals. But ultimately, they're there to achieve and be successful academically, but also that emotional part needs to be handled as well or in line in order for them to be successful academically. You can't be... Have grief and anxiety and be successful academically. You just can't.
Councilmember Mensing.
What ideas do you have to improve transparency between the cities and schools? And in which ways do you think we can work together?
Can meet our budget meetings together. We can have work groups, whether it's meeting informally or formally, but looking documents over, saying, hey, can you look at this? What do you think? What are your... An understanding also of the city's objectives and strategy for its future, and then how to align that with the schools. They work hand in hand. The school, when it comes to the objectives for the school, and this team, the school board is the leader, and we need your support. But when it comes to the city's objectives to being successful, the school... The school board is a team member of this City Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hampton.
First of all, public speaking is not easy. I don't care what anybody says.
It's just been a while. I'm sorry.
Nothing to be sorry about. It's not easy, so I just want to let you know that. So mine is more of a theoretical question. So in this... I would have never been on school board, but haven't been a project manager or program manager, and on City Council, it's kind of the same. We deal with individuals. Yeah. Some have very nice personalities, some have some very challenging personalities. So with that being said, how would you handle an instance of criticism from any stakeholder, whether that's a parent, a teacher, another board member, someone in the school administration? And what would be your... And what was a response to any type of criticism?
So, believe it or not, I do chair the Prince William County Employee Advisory Committee. So I lead 3,000 employees, and I represent them for Prince William County. And I work with a committee, obviously, and we don't agree. We vote, and they don't always vote with me, and it's okay. And if someone came to me and questioned my perspective on something, well, that's okay. I mean, it's okay to have a different opinion. It's okay to not agree with me. I can explain if they need explanation, but ultimately, everyone is entitled to their opinion. And honestly, who's to say that I'm right? I mean, and that's... That's the perspective that I have. I might be, but I might not be. And in their eyes, I'm not. And that's okay. I don't find that combative. I don't find that challenging. So my response would be to listen to what they have to say and take it in, and so... And have that as reference for any kind of future decisions or to understand. You have to understand your community and people are providing input. They didn't... They're not telling you how they feel for their... For themselves. They're telling you how they feel because it means something to them, and it's important, and it's important to them. And I should value that. That's how I would respond.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banks.
Hi, Ms. Fleming.
Hi.
Welcome and excuse me for your interest in serving on the school board. My question is about the current trends in the school division. Right now, our enrollment in the school division, student enrollment is declining. However, in two populations, they're increasing, and that's for the special education student and the English learner student. What would you... Or what ways or policies would you come up with to address new groups of students that are increasing, the English learners and the special education students?
Well, I think we would need to look at, do we have the infrastructure in place and the resources in place to handle the increases in those two student populations? So do we have the teachers in place to handle the increase in ESL classes or the special ed classes, or... And also what levels? So do we have the therapists at the elementary school, middle school, and high school to help those students with their organizational skills or with reading or the one-on-one time that they may need to make them progress and keep up with their peers? So those would be the things that I would start to look at, would be the resources and the... Whether it's building resources or teacher resources, but just make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to handle those two student populations. Did that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you, Preston. I would like to yield my question to Councilmember Moore. I know he has quite a few, so go ahead.
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Fleming, describe how... What equity... Let me rephrase this. Describe what equity looks like to you in the school district.
I think that every child has the ability to be successful in their own terms. It doesn't mean that everyone's definition of success is the same. It doesn't mean that... And to me, success means happiness, by the way. It doesn't mean money or anything like that. It's whatever that person's definition of success or happiness is. So what is... What is every student, you're saying, entitled to? I think they're entitled to education. I think they're entitled to opportunity, every single one of them. And I think to achieve that, some students require more resources than others. And that's just... Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, what does equity mean to you? So you're doing a good job in telling me that.
Just academically, academically and emotionally, that they need... They should be provided the opportunity to be successful, and that's... It can be anything. It can be whether it's a program to teach them how to build something or get a plumbing certification, or whether it is to go to college.
Thank you.
Councilmember Amaya.
So kind of piggyback out of Councilmember Moore's question. So students have different ways of learning. Students have different ways of retaining information. I think our school system has a one way of teaching and a one way of kids to learn. And you being on the board, how would you help kids that have a different style in a different way have, I guess, the resources or the work the teachers would do with them in a different way? Would you implement a different program, or would you help create a different style or a different... I know they have some right now that kind of caters to different students, but I just think sometimes some kids, because they're not very vocal, get lost.
Yeah, so I agree. I have those kids. I have them at home. Yes. Okay. And they're all different. And flexibility is key for me. So I had a son when he was at All Saints, and it's just... It's the more of a one-way learning. Everything was written. He has dysgraphia. He's not writing anything, and he certainly isn't sitting still. So typing was big for him. The ability to type, he was doing... He was in seventh grade writing five-word sentences, but once you put a computer in front of him, he's writing paragraphs. So his English and his writing skills progressed rapidly. Like, you can't stop. He just... He won't shut up on paper now. So what would I do? I think flexibility, again, flexibility. And that was what I was presented with when we came to Manassas Park Schools, was the flexibility. These kids, it... Grades are good. Grades are measurable. We need grades. However, did they get the concept? Did they learn it? Due dates, I will say, especially with my special ed learner, are not hard and fast. It is get it in. Let's work together. Let's get it done. Let's learn the concepts. Let's make sure you've met the academic objective versus, hey, you know what? You're five days late. It's five points off for every five days. If the child needs to stand in order to listen, then they stand. They need a pace in the back of the room, they pace in the back of the room. Again, it's flexibility. I think you really have to be flexible with our students. And the tricky part is, and this is where your question kind of came in about the therapists and things like that, you have students that are not assessed as special ed, but they still have special needs. So... And they don't fit that mold. And that's important to recognize them and understand them. And unfortunately, the people that are going to be able to see that are going to be our frontline, and that's our teachers. Our teachers are going to see it, and they're saying, well, they're not really special ed, and you know what? They got assessed, but they didn't make it, but they still have some special needs. What are those needs? How do we make them successful?
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Ms. Fleming, what ways would you... Or what could you see being done to increase the applicant pool from... For teachers from communities of color, so that we have a larger, better, diverse teaching staff?
I'll be honest, I don't know. I don't... I don't know. I mean, I know what appeals to teachers in general and tuition assistance, anybody that wants to come in, internships, bringing people in and saying, come in, shadow, intern, help in a class, especially some of the special ed classes, or not even the special ed classes, classes that just have been identified as having a few too many kids or some rambunctious kids, or they had some issues in the past. Just have them come in and help out, get those internships going, and... But benefits with... Benefits for the teachers. I mean, tuition assistance and educating our teachers to help retain them, to me, is a... Would be a big win.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Thank you.
Councilmember Javed.
So my next question is going to kind of deal with the technology. You know, COVID-19, we had to adjust teaching styles throughout the district. And with that said, the technology was implemented to have students learn from home. Now, with that, do you think technology is a positive influence in a kid's educational? Or is it too much technology? Is there somewhere there needs to be a cap of how much technology we're implementing to our kids?
So I'm an IT person.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I am a big believer in IT, but I'm also a big believer in communicating. So I have customers, and when I walk to them, their departments, so is HR, planning, GIS. I mean, I walk to them. I go... I walk. I actually get up out of my seat, and I go talk to them. I'm like, what's going on? How's... How are you doing? And they'll tell me stuff, stuff that if I had sat at my desk, they're not going to send me an email about their problems. So I believe one-on-one is important, hearing a teacher. So my son, he did great. He did great with the hybrid or the online, 100% online. But over time, he didn't... Especially since they didn't start off the beginning of the year, he didn't have that initial connection for this beginning of this year. So when they went to hybrid, that helped a lot. I do believe it is a mix. I think hybrid was ideal for him, not for everybody. It was for him. And that helped him have the connection, but also gave him the quiet time that he needed at home to work through a lot of the material. My other son, being in person was imperative. So he was at All Saints, and they did do four days a week at school. They went earlier, four days, and they did hy... They've been hybrid since August. So that was imperative for him. We kept him home through December 100%, and he was just struggling, really, really struggling. So we made the call as a family to have him go back to school hybrid and then four days a week. But it's... It really depends on the student. You can't... It's really hard to make a... An across-the-board decision. And I didn't envy the school board making those tough decisions. I admire them, and they did have to be made. And so... And again, there... I don't think there was a right or a wrong necessarily, but it was a tough decision that they had to make.
Councilmember Mensing.
The city is still recovering from years of bad financial decisions. In order to give more money to the schools, where would you make cuts to the city budget and why?
That's tough, because I think we're making a lot of progress, quite frankly, in a lot of the areas where we need to progress and grow as a city. I don't know. I honestly think it's... I don't know. I don't know where I would... Because I do think the direction that we're headed as a city, the town center, the new moot, the city hall, I think those are the right choices. I've lived here since 1999, when the initial plans for this city was there, and they came out, and they presented it in this room, and I was here. And I kind of felt that it was never finished. So I feel like the city is finally finishing that city, that town center. It's finally... It was half-done all of these years, and now it's going to be completed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hampton.
So my question is kind of a tangent to Councilmember Mensing's. You know, you're... This position, you're on there for four years. Anything can change. Something I've seen living here my whole entire life, and things change. Hopefully, this never happens, but if we end up in a situation where we're not as cash flush as we want to, and we all, all of us, in every situation, in leadership position in the school, in the city, has to make a decision on cuts, what is your process on determining cuts in the budget for the school?
Okay, so I do believe, like I said, I'm a team player, and I believe that it's working with the school, other school board members, the school administration. Because again, I really feel that the budget needs to be impactful to... At the student, so the bottom line, and the bottom line is the student. So that's where most of our money should be focused, is the bottom line, the student. And where... That's where we need to be impactful, and then we need to go from there. That's my perspective, but again, it would definitely require input from the school administration, and we would probably get feedback from the community, I'm sure. Hopefully, we would get, hopefully, from the community as well. But it is... It would be something that we would need to also look at, the school objectives and what programs currently align with those school objectives and which ones have kind of fallen away, and those would be the ones that we would probably, or I would look at personally.
Okay, thank you. I'm taking notes. That's why I'm not looking.
I wasn't sure if I answered the question.
Vice Mayor Bang.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Vice Mayor Bang.
I have a question about teacher retention. Teachers every year, and every teacher is a good teacher.
Agreed.
What would you do about improving teacher retention?
So I believe, again, one of the things that... When you go to sometimes a corporation, they talk about, again, it's the tuition assistance. I really believe in it and that they say that, you know, hey, we'll pay for this particular part of your education to further your education if you stay with Manassas Park for so long. So start to get them involved or ingrained into our community as well. But that's... It's through benefits and also, again, the tuition assistance and recruiting locally locally in our local area where they have the family and they have their roots that are here. I take jobs that are close to my home, because I have three children, I have a family. I took a huge pay cut so I could be home with my family and help them and get them through school. So it's about, it's about, there's, there's more than money. There's, it's family and roots, and also furthering yourself as well academically. So not just our students, but also our teachers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Preston. And I would again like to yield my question to Councilmember Moore.
Another round?
Another round, yes.
Whoa.
You hit the jackpot, Darrell.
We did. Well, let's see here. We asked about retention. First of all, I like your, your answers on vocational education and expanding that. Can you talk a little bit more?
I grew up with shop. I grew up with shop at Lee High School.
What did I?
Cosmetology.
Auto shop?
Yes, all the, I mean, absolutely. And I'll be hon, I, I work, I have a, know a teacher that, at Thomas Jefferson, and he, that's what he does, is, it's technology, it's technology and shop. They cut things up and they add electronics and things like that. It's, it's not just about calculus.
But the question comes in, you know, it's a, it's a pie. The budget at the school district is a pie. And if the majority of that pie is going to academic classes, your sciences and your, you know, biologies and math and, and English and those kind of courses, where could one carve out the additional funds needed to fund the shop classes, which, which I would agree are, are needed? But where do we find the funding to do the, the shop classes? Because they are quite expensive.
To be honest, I, I don't know, but we could work with businesses locally to see if we could have internships or hands-on experiences for our students where they can go and learn. That would be, that would be one way to do it. I don't know if there's other schools or schools locally that have those programs where our students could participate as well. Or if we do the internship, then there could be an online portion that is, so it's not a full classroom, but more of a, a work center where they can sit and do the online portion, but then go and do the internship, which is the hands-on portion as well. So those are, those are some, but ultimately, it is, it is something that would need to be funded. It's not, you know, you can't just do it for free. It is not going to be free. Is it something that we can work together and phase in, small, and then, and then let it grow? I think so. I think so. And I think if it's important enough, we can make it work, right?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Fleming.
Councilmember Amaya.
As a school board member, how would you address the challenge of increasing parental and community involvement with the schools?
Oh, that's so hard. So when I first came to Manassas Park, I went to a special ed meeting for parents, and some of the parents there were talking about how their students weren't getting enough, you know, speech therapy. They're allotted time for speech therapy and all of this, and some of the parents there didn't feel that they could advocate for their child because of, they didn't speak English. Okay? So, and I thought about this a lot, and I, and I was like, when my kids would get a little older, I'd really like to be an advocate for students who don't have someone to come into their IEP meetings, where their parent doesn't show up, because that's another problem that we have, is that we have IEP, and IEP meetings are 504 meetings, and there's no parent to advocate to say, my student needs these services or these accommodations, because the parent's going to know them best, or that they don't even know that those accommodations exist. Unfortunately, with IEP and 504 meetings, those are HIPAA, you know, so you can't really just have some random person come in and, you know, parents sit on those meetings and advocate for those children. But parent involvement is difficult, especially with our parents that do not speak English. And some of the, so I had thought about it as well, some type of translation email communication where they can copy always, so they send an email to the teacher, and they can always copy someone who can translate, so a translator, or something, something there where if they want to step in, or they can step in, make it easy, make it not something where they're trying to type English and, and they're afraid they're going to make a mistake, that, that It's, it is hard to get parents to be involved, and you end up, you can't force it, because it can become, it can be offensive if you try to force somebody to step up or make them feel like they're not parenting their child. So you have to, it has to be done very carefully. But I do think the email communication, so it's more passive, to start getting that ground laid, so that a parent can communicate with a teacher, and the teacher can communicate with the parent with somebody translating through email, so, because it's passive, a more passive.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Amy, is there time for another question?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep going.
We'll keep going.
We'll try to.
My next question then is your thoughts, concerns about bilingual education, particularly at the elementary level?
For the English speakers or the Spanish speakers?
For both.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So I was actually speaking to a friend about this, and so when I was a little girl, I was in fourth grade, and I took after-school Spanish.
Excellent.
Because the only Spanish I took was after-school, was an after-school program, and I learned a lot. And that's the Spanish I know. But it was Spanish that stuck with me, because I learned it when I was in fourth grade.
Absolutely.
Now I took three years of French in high school. Now you ask me how much I remember those three years of French. I'm pretty, I'm okay, I'm not terrible, but it was fun in fourth grade, learning Spanish. My boys, also, when they did go to All Saints, they took Spanish from kindergarten up. So kindergarten was when they started Spanish, and they started there. And I think that if we're going to get our English speakers speaking Spanish, we got to start younger. We can't start later. It's, once, once they're in high school, it's all over, right? I mean, lost them to girls and boys and all that stuff, right? But yes, and so for our Spanish speakers, again, from the flip side, okay, so we'll go the other way, start young, hit it hard when they're young. It is hard when they come to our school system not speaking any English, and they're coming in at middle school or high school. It's hard, and it's hard on them, and I think that needs to be recognized and understood, that it is hard for them. And I think sometimes the therapists and things like that, I think, I don't, there's an emotional impact that comes with that. When you come from somewhere else, and you're coming here, there's an emotional impact. And just because you don't speak English doesn't mean that it's not there, or, and that's, I think that needs to be understood, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Javed.
My next question would be, how might you, I guess, how might the arrival of the new superintendent influence your priorities? Like, you know, we have, Dr. McDay is leaving, and he's been there for years. So do you think, how, I guess, the superintendent and school board can, will share the same priorities, or are you guys open to implementing some new ideas? And how do you think?
I would be new, so I'm definitely open to ideas. I think, I, I think new ideas are good. I think, I think everything should be thrown up against the wall to see what sticks. I don't think any idea is a bad idea. I think it needs to be vetted. And I think we have some senior members on the school board that will be able to vet it, but I also think that sometimes you just need to give things a chance. So you can't have those preconceived notions that it's not going to work, because this isn't the way we've always done it. I think you need to try it. And maybe you need to try it with a pilot, start small, and then go from there and see how it goes. Because sometimes you'll be surprised, things might work that you didn't think would work.
Thank you. Councilmember Mencing.
All right, you guys just asked all my questions that I had.
I know.
So here's one that I just came up with. What are your feelings about the balanced calendar versus the traditional calendar? So like, starting in late August versus after Labor Day?
The only reason they did after Labor Day was because I think the King's Dominion thing, right? So I mean, I don't think it's really relevant. I think August is fine.
So how do you feel about, this was something that came up when I was on, but it never went anywhere, having the testing for the first half of the year before the holiday break, rather than going on holiday break, coming back, finishing the first half?
Before they, they go on holiday break, because they've checked out. It's done. They're done. I mean, they're, yeah, I mean, they're kids.
So you would be in favor of kind of splitting it evenly, starting a little bit earlier, finishing that first half before holiday?
And that's how we do it right now, isn't it? Yeah.
Wasn't when I left. Maybe they changed it.
They did.
They did?
Yes.
Oh, sweet. All right.
Yeah, I, I know, I mean, I know me, and I, I'm, I, yeah, I, I know my kids, I mean, once they go on break, you know, that's it. And that, and that, I mean, my kids have had assignments where they've, were sick the week before Christmas, and then it, they're like, the teacher's like, oh, we'll just do it when we get back. And I'm like, oh, sure. So they'll have it hanging over their head, and they'll have to, you know, go over it, and they're going to fail it when they get back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hampton.
So first of all, I'd like to know that I'm alumni of George, of, not George Mason, but also All Saints.
Okay.
Many years ago, back when you had to wear saddle shoes.
Did you go all, all year, all?
First through six, and then moved on to another school.
Okay.
My brother went first through eighth, actually went kindergarten through eighth.
So we have graduation on, yeah, next week, for my old, for my middle son, yeah.
So I think all the teachers that taught me are long retired. So what is your thoughts on the school board involvement, whether that's the school board as a whole, or as an individual in the daily operations of the school system?
It's not our place for the daily operations. Is it my job to understand it, understand the impact at a higher level? I think yes, because I'm a parent too, and, and so I do see a lot of it. So how we implement policy or procedures, or what we agree on, seeing how it's implemented downstream is important to see, because sometimes when your vision, sometimes it may not be implemented exactly that what you planned, or it's not having the impact you thought it was going to have. But ultimately, that's the superintendent's job to implement those processes and procedures downstream or at the, the school level. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the closing statement now. No, I know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to.
I think he's present anyway.
Yeah. We went a couple minutes over, because we took some of your time at the beginning with the basic opening of the meeting, so, so I added a few minutes on for that. So let's move on to closing statement, two minutes limit, and Keith will approach the podium when you reach one minute.
Okay.
Okay?
I really just want to say thank you for having me. I really don't have a closing statement, but I hope I convey that I would really like to be a part of the school board team and work with all of you to achieve student success. And again, that's, that is my primary objective or desire to be on the school board, is student success, and it's all students, all of them. And especially our varying population. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The public hearing for the school board appointments will be June 1st, that's this coming Tuesday evening. You can have your supporters provide statements of support. They can either do it through email, or they can come in real time, or they can get a link and, and come in over GoToMeeting. Our city clerk, Lena Connor, would, will provide any answers to your procedural questions that you might have, and then the vote will be taken on June 15th. And thank you again very much.
Thank you. It was nice seeing all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't, did you make your final statement? Okay, good. Yeah. Sorry, I was focused on procedure. Okay. I think we'll roll right into Mr. Tyler Vaughn. We welcome you and we thank you very much for stepping up and wanting to serve the city. It's terrific. First, we invite you to give a brief opening statement. Please limit yourself to three minutes, and when Keith approaches the podium, that means you have one minute left.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right. My name is Tyler Vaughn, 27 years old, from Charles County, Maryland. That's where I'm from. Been out here for about almost three years. I lived in an apartment in Manassas, and then we just recently bought a home in Manassas Park in October. So I'm in the area now. I taught computer science for about a year in Charles County, and then due to, you know, family situation, we decided to move to Virginia, and it's where I'm at now. I loved teaching, I loved it, but at the same time, I wanted to have a bigger family. And I knew that, me going to school for computer science, I knew that I can provide a little more for my family if I'm not teaching. I know it sounds, it sounds rough to say, but that's just how it is. Teachers are overqualified and underpaid for the most part. So I just knew that, for me to be teaching, I knew that if I'm sitting out there not doing what I think I should be doing for my family, I didn't feel like I can give my all into teaching. So that's why I left, that's why I left teaching, unfortunately. But I loved it, and I did. That's why I'm here today. I can't teach, but I can still do something with the board, you know? I can help out, give ideas, give fresh new ideas, try my best to learn from what you all do every day, and every, every week at the meetings. So that's my goal, to kind of learn, but at the same time, I do want to serve. I have some ideas. Are they great? I don't know. We'll find out today. But that's why I'm here. I want to try my best, and I want to be a part of the board. I really do. So it's the best way I think I can serve the community without teaching, is being on the board for the schools. I think that's pretty much it for me, for my opening statement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Let's start with Vice Mayor Banks at home with the first question. Go ahead, Preston.
Hi, Mr. Vaughn. Welcome, and thank you for your interest in serving on the school board.
Yeah.
My question is about our growing student population, it, are the special education students and the English learner students. What ways or policies would you come up with to address the needs of this, these two rising student population groups in our school division?
All right, so the question that you're saying is, what can we do to kind of assess, you know, the rising population in those two groups? Is that kind of?
Address.
Okay. I mean, my mindset is to put more resources that we could afford to it. If we can't afford a full-time position in it, we understand, things happen, but can we get somebody who might be willing to help out part-time? Maybe give a few, even an hour after school, or an hour during school, during their planning block? I don't know. But that's something that we can do. I know that's something I did as a teacher during my planning block. I helped out. I helped out some kids in the IEP section. They needed help with some math, so I helped out during my planning period. That's my time, but teachers are willing to do that stuff. They're teachers, they really want to teach, so they want to be there. They want to help out as many people as they possibly can. So that's my mindset on it. Financially, I don't know how that would work. Unfortunately, I'm not aware of that situation, but we just got to use the resources that we have and try our best to allocate them as best as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Councilmember Hampton.
So as I mentioned, the previous candidate, you know, this position is four years, a lot of things can happen in four years.
Of course.
I've seen that happen here, where we've been flush, and then something happens elsewhere, and we weren't. So with that being said, there may come a time, we hope not, but there may come a time when this person's on the board, that some tough decisions have to be made, including cuts in the budget. So can you walk me through your process to help determine or identify possible areas of cut, if and when such a situation should arise?
Possible areas of cut?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know any possible areas to cut off the top of your head. I don't know, but I do know that we are a team, and if somebody else has an idea, I'm willing to listen to it as much as possible. You know, tell me, tell me why you think we should cut X, Y, Z versus this, or A over B. Let me know. Right now, I'm not thoroughly Right now, I'm not thoroughly versed in the dynamics of Manassas Park right now, but I will be. I'm trying to. I've only been here for a few months, so I am trying to get into that. But I'm, I'm willing to listen to somebody else. If P, if I got two opinions, I'll read both, read both proposals and give my best opinion and then we vote on it, right? That's what we do. So, that's, that's how I would look at it. But in the future, if I have my own opinion, like you said, I'll bring it to the board, bring it to the meeting and we all vote on that as well. But in a particular area to cut, I cannot say strongly that I want to cut one thing over the other right now. I just cannot make that decision right now.
So, your process is listening?
For right now, yes.
Okay.
Because I don't want to make, that'd be disrespectful to y'all to make a, to make an uneducated opinion right now, right? Y'all been here longer than I have, so that wouldn't be right on me right now.
I've only been here four months, four or five months, so.
I was just saying, like, yeah, that's, that's kind of how it go. But in the future, like you said, it is four years, so.
It's three years.
Three years?
Years.
What? I apologize.
That's my mistake. I said four.
Oh, so in three years, you will learn a lot, so things will change by then.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. My question is the same question that I asked Ms. Fleming because I, I consider this to be very important. The future relationship between the city and the schools, communication, cooperation, especially regarding financial best practices and maintaining compliance with Virginia law. What can you do individually to help with the relationship between the schools and the city regarding communication?
Listening to somebody else, your opinion may actually change. I learn that all the time with my wife right now. I listen to what she says and guess what? I'm a better man for it. So, I mean, that's the best way we can do it. Like, obviously, if somebody is saying, okay, we should cut this, we ask why, they give a rationale. If we all agree on it or disagree, we let them know and we go from there. But just listen to somebody, hear them out. Like, don't be so stuck in your own bias that, I didn't mean to do that, I'm sorry, it just happened. Don't be stuck in your own bias where you can't listen to somebody else. And that's the only way I think we can prepare city versus the schools. I mean, that's what I would do.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Mensing.
So, hi. As a new school board member, how would you seek out mentoring or how would you go about getting educated as to the, how would you seek opportunities to educate yourself and get mentored?
Well, I know one thing I would like to do and I've done it already is, uh, within Charles County, I talked to, the superintendent there, used to be my principal, which is kind of cool. So, I talked to her a few times about what are some things that they have done. This was like, I was probably like a sophomore in college when I did that. So, that was obviously a long time ago, but that's one thing. I did reach out to a former resource and just asked questions. The one thing I did also want to do is ask parents, what are some things they wanted, they want, what improvements they want? One of my neighbors, she has five kids and I asked her about Manassas Park schools. Just, just ask, because I have twin, I have 21-year-olds and I want to know, because my kids will be in school one day. I was like, what do you want? And she's, she said everything was pretty good for the most part, but she did say that constant communication. Teachers give constant communication for that, so that's one thing I think I'll do is just try to reach out and learn from inside sources, outside sources. Just because a parent is not a part of the board or going to meetings, they're still a citizen of Manassas Park and their kid still goes to the school, so their opinion is just as important as ours. So, that's, that's, that's how I would do my research and then whatever y'all are willing to tell me. I'm always open.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Javed.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the same question about the policing.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna rephrase that. I think, what, do you think the presence of like school resource officers is a positive influence on kids in the learning environment, especially the minority population? And should there be an emphasis more on the counselors and the therapists instead of having a police presence?
Oh, man, you got me there, man. Because I feel, because I feel, because I feel strongly on both ways, like, like I had a school resource officer when I was in high school and it was a black gentleman that taught me ways to how to deal with the police when they attack, when they talk to me, right? He said, make sure you have your driver's license and your registration on the dashboard, keep your hands on the wheel, right? Because you know, you never know what other police officers are. That's something I learned in like ninth grade and I'm 27 talking about it right now. So, that's something I learned. But at the same time, I don't want to take the officers out of the school just because of, you know, one, one or two bad ones that happened somewhere in a different country or not country, different part of the world or in different part of the nation, you know? Because for the most part, it's probably giving some type of positive influence, like she said earlier about how the officer ate with her, with one of her kids. Like, you never know who needs what, but that's one thing I would say. But when it comes to the counselors, I don't know how we do like the counselors and the therapists here, but I'm pretty sure we have some. I think the only thing I would suggest is like pushing it out there a little bit more, like letting students and parents know that, hey, we have these resources. I never talked to my counselor in high school, except when I had to pick classes. My wife says she went to her counselor like a therapist. I didn't know that, though, but so some kids don't even know they have that person there with, willing to just to talk to them. So, I think we have the resources probably, but you just got to let them know that it's there and some kids just don't know and then some parents don't know. So, we can't really do anything about that, right? So, yeah. No problem.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, for stepping up and coming before us tonight. I'm gonna ask my question about specifically, how would you close the opportunity gap that exists in the district?
I'll elaborate on that when I'm a little.
Yeah, and I probably should have the last question there, because maybe in this district, the term is not used as opportunity gap.
Or achievement.
Yeah, it is achievement gap, yes.
Okay.
It is the achievement gap. Uh, how would you close the achievement gap?
In what respect? As in like what, what one kid achieved more than the other or like I'm kind of?
Yeah, 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 I'll be, um.
Like?
What we see and not just in Manassas Park, but in the school districts around the country, uh, black and brown students have a, a gap in their educational attainment.
Okay.
Over the white students in the, in the class. So, how do we close that gap, achievement gap, so that all are achieving to their, their highest level?
Oh, man. I'll tell you that right now, it's, it's everybody. It isn't just the schools. It isn't just the kids, not just the parents, it's everybody. Because I had wonderful teachers, but I graduated high school with 2.1 because my parents just didn't know the resources that the school gave me. So, I had to go to college and do good in college in order to succeed in life. But it's, everybody has to be involved. Like, we have to start pushing, hey, you know, we have this resource for your kid. Hey, you can do this after school. You can do this during school. Like, we have the resources, but we just got to let people know we actually have them. Like, that's the one thing I think, and obviously, it's, you can't fix an achievement gap in one night. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's going to take a long time. It's going to take time to do it. But as long as we're progressing forward and we're actually showing an effort towards it, I don't see anybody trying to blame you for trying to do better, you know? So, even if we go up 0.1%, it's better than going down. So, that's something that we can do. We just got to, we just got to be out there, get to be more aggressive in our, in our message.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Councilmember Maya.
So, piggybacking on his question too as well, um, how would you make those resources available? What, what, what types of tools or how would you get that information to parents and to students, especially since we do have a English-speaking, uh, English learners, right, demographic in the, in the school? How would you address getting that information out there? How would you do it? I mean, would you use email? Would you use actual teachers? How, how would you get that information out?
Well, I don't know if email works much. We're talking about just the, the average citizen, right? How are we going to reach them? You got to, in a sense, be annoying, like not to sound rude, but you got to be annoying in a sense. So, you got to put it somewhere where they're going to see it, their front door. How do I know this? Because, uh, when you were, I think you put some, you put something under my doormat, Mayor. And I just moved here. I was like, oh, okay, cool. So, but I didn't know, but that's, it made me look at it and I knew it was there. So, like stuff like that, like just putting it under the doormat or putting it inside the door. Don't put it in a mailbox, that's illegal. So, I'm saying those are the things we can do to like get the message out. Well, is it foolproof? Of course not. You know, some, some, 90% of people might throw it in the trash. Or if we do social media promotion, many people may not even see it. But like I said earlier, we're trying, right? We're doing something to just try to push those agendas forward. Seems like what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Banks.
Get on the subject of teacher retention. Every year, our school division loses teachers and every teacher is a good teacher. What would you do to improve teacher retention?
Oh, man. This is one that actually got me stuck because, uh, Charles County, they gave me, uh, they gave me money off my apartment. They give you money off your apartment if you live in Charles County, right? So, I was like, oh, man, I get, I'm getting money off my apartment, you know? This is, this is a good deal, but I still left, but I still left, right? So, no matter what you do, things can still happen. I don't know if we can do that. I don't know if we do that. Do we do something like that right now where a teacher can possibly get like a hundred or even 300, $200 off their rent at these wonderful apartments right here, right? Or these new condos? The, something like that, right? Where we're just trying to make it easier to live here, right? We already can sell that there's a bunch of stuff in the area. I live in Manassas Park. I love, I can drive five minutes to get some food, man. It's awesome. Little things like that can actually keep somebody around and some teachers want to start families, some people don't. But if you want to start families, the place where you're ready to start a family. So, now you're starting a family, you're giving them a discount of where they live, where they lay their head at, right? And then some places, I don't know if we do it here, but I know that might be a state thing, but like teachers can possibly get like a lower interest rate on their mortgage, right? So, little things like that can possibly keep that, that one teacher, the good teacher, like you said, here instead of leaving for another one, a Lender County, another district, whatever, whatever the case may be. That's what I would do for retention. Another thing I can mention is that can we, is it possible to partner up with a college or a community college and give them some type of like teacher assistant role while they're enrolled in school? Can we do something like that where, okay, you go to class, but after, you, one of your classes, you go actually as a teacher and you help a teacher out in whatever field you want to teach? Or if you don't know what you want to teach, try, try all of them, right? So, that's something I think I will help teacher retention, especially if their first job isn't with the Manassas Park schools and now they go from a assistant, teacher assistant to a full-time teacher and now they're like, oh, I like this place. Maybe I want to get in administration and then now you got them. Now they're here and they, and they're already invested, so they don't want to leave. That's something I would do for teacher retention.
Thank you.
No problem.
So, in this, basically, you're an executive level at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
And as I mentioned earlier, you deal with all sorts of people, people that are really low-key, easy to along with and to some that are just challenging. I think you grow as an individual. So, with that being said, how do you handle or how, how would you handle or how have you handled an instance of receiving criticism, criticism from these stakeholders, parent, teacher, um, another board member, school administration, anybody out there in the universe? And if this has happened, can you give me some back, an idea of how you responded? What happened?
Man, this happened today at work.
Really?
Yeah. All right. So, I'm a, I'm a contractor for DIA, right? So, I'm a, I'm a junior release manager. So, I'm the little guy and he came to me because the big guy wasn't in yet. He was like, why is this not out yet? And I was like, I don't know. I'm just a little guy. So, what I had to do was I took all the notes I could. I asked all the questions, like what do you need from us? Like, what do you want from us? What is your end goal? Because I didn't, I couldn't answer any of the questions he had at the time. So, bring it back to the team and actually listen. If somebody's that invested to put criticism to me while I'm in public, that means they really care. Because how many times somebody walking on the street saying something like, oh, you're the person from the board and they just, they just lash out at you? I don't know how often it happens, but I'm saying if it does, that means that person might actually care about their kids and the community. Means they have some type of investment. So, take it seriously. Write a note. If I, if I don't have a notepad walking around, I'll put it in my note in my phone or something, like just try to bring their ideas to the board if they can't make the meeting. I know some people are like, well, come to the meeting. Well, some people just don't have the time and if they do have the time, they might be just tired, you know, long day, so they may not be able to go. They may, they may just forget to click the link. You never know. So, I think that's something that we can do. Like, if somebody brings that criticism to me out of nowhere, I'm in Walmart, like I'll just bring it back here and say, this is what somebody said. Is it valid? Is, you know, is there something we can do to fix it? If there isn't, then we tried our best, but if there is, then why not try? That's how I would take it.
Thank you for your client and give you criticism. That never happens. Thank you.
Thank you. I yield my question again to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, ma'am. How would you increase the number of the teachers in the applicant pool, particularly from communities of color, to increase our diversity of teaching staff in the district?
Oh, trying to create, increase diversity? Oh, yeah. Let's go to some schools. Let's get some teacher fairs. Every, every college got teacher fairs, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. That's, that's why I applied to my own county. They came, I went to Frostburg State University in Western Maryland. My own county came out there, 180 miles away. And I was like, oh, I didn't know y'all were hiring, you know, teachers with just a bachelor's degree. I was like, okay, cool. So, I, I applied and I got in. I was a computer science teacher for a year. So, I'm saying, let's go to some schools. Let's go to those, if they have college fairs or schools. If you're worried about, if you're, you're not worried, but if you're focused on diversity, go to some HBCUs. Let's go some other places. Let's go places where nobody really go and let's, let's go to those college fairs, set up a little tent or a table and just say, hey, you know, these are the positions we have open. Are you interested? You know? And then on that same board, we can put, we also, we offer housing assistance. We give you this much off this apartment that's a beautiful, right across the street. It's right next to your school that you'll be working at. So, it's, I don't know, little things like that. So it's, I don't know, little things like that. I think that will go a long way, like especially at colleges, you know, I'm a college student. I'm broke, I'm hungry, but I see opportunity at a college fair. Oh, I can, that's why I'm here. I can make it. So little things like that will go a long way in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Councilmember Mensing.
The city is still recovering from years of bad financial decisions. In order to give more money to the schools, where would you make cuts to the city budget and why?
Man, I'm going to be a forward thinker here. And I'm going to say that in the future, with the development that we're doing, there'll be more income coming into Manassas Park. That's what I can focus on. Uh, like I said earlier, I, I don't know what to cut, but from what I'm seeing here and what I've read when I first moved out here, I read about some development in Manassas Park when I first moved out here in December 2018. And so I had a feeling that there was some type of money coming in here. Um, I see those, uh, I see those shops under those apartments that are blank right now. Do we get some type of revenue back from those shops doing any type of business? A little bit. That also helps as well on top of all the other houses that we're going to build here. That's tax revenue that comes back to the city. So I can only focus on the, on the full, I guess on the future. I'm saying, hey, in the future, we might have a bigger budget compared to now. Um, I don't want to dwell, I don't want to dwindle on that, the past, it is what it is. I can't change it. But we look like we're moving forward right now. So let's keep it moving, like the VRE right there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Javed.
Yeah, it's the technology question.
Okay.
I guess you're a technology guy too.
Hmm.
Um, I guess the, the schools right now, they have a big focus on technology.
Yeah, of course.
And I guess they do the canvas and they, they were well-prepared for the COVID-19.
Hmm.
Transition.
For the transition, I guess. Sorry, thank you. So my question is that, do you see that we, we should double down in technology in each classroom? Or do you think that, that the teachers, the old-school fashion way is more, more effective way of learning? Like which, what type of policy would you, would you go for? The technology base or the, for the human interaction?
Kids learn when they're having fun. Did y'all have fun doing these meetings virtually? You guys literally just said you wanted to cozy up together because you guys loved it. Kids lo, kids learn when they're having fun, right? I had favorite teachers. I don't remember a single thing they taught me, but it's in relationships, right? But I, and I did good, I did good in those classes though. So that's what I'm saying. Like, I think if we have a mix, obviously I understand if we have to do it, you know what I'm saying? I'm not going to make kids sit like this. You know, we still have to be safe, but I think in, in person is, I think we have to get them back in school. Just for, just, just for our mental health. Like nobody's built to sit and, to sit at a computer like this all day, especially not a child, man. Like it's, it's not right. Like kids, kids love to be around other kids. So I think getting them back in school safely, of course, I think that can be the number one priority. Um, if you want to focus on doing some things virtually, just to save paper, like if you have some type of technology classes that don't need, you know, reviving on a paper all day, then that's cool. I think that's a good idea. Um, one of my buddies, his kid, not his kid, but his brother goes to a school where they're all virtual when it comes to assignments. They're still in class every day and they're, but they're virtual when it comes to assignments just to save paper. That's super expensive. I know it's, it's some fancy private school, but like if we have, if we already have the computers, let's limit the paper we use and just use the computers on that if we can. Now, some classes obviously need paper, but I think just having that mix of in-class, but using a computer, if that's possible, I think that would be the best solution going forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Mr. Vaughn, uh, describe for me what equity looks like in the school district to you.
Man, I know y'all seen that photo where it was like equality versus equity and it has like the four kids on the boxes. That's literally what I thought about when you said it. I mean, I don't know how else to explain it. Like seriously, like some kids need more than others. It's, it's simply how it goes. Not every kid can get 10 words on a paper and understand all 10 words. Some kids need more help. Um, that's simply all it is. If you see one kid getting A pluses all day, what, that's what teachers do right now. If, if you have assignment and you got 10 kids getting 100%, the teacher, for the most part, I don't want to say every teacher because I'm not a teacher anymore, but for the most part, they kind of let them do their thing because they're already there. They're going to, they're going to gravitate towards the kids that need more help. And I'm pretty sure teachers are already doing that now. So it seems like equity is probably being done very well in the school system. Obviously there's some hit or misses everywhere because nobody's perfect, but I think that's being done, honestly. Like why, if I'm a teacher, I'm not going to allocate 10 more resources to this kid that has a 4.5. They are, they know what they're, they know what they're doing. They're, they're really good at what they do. Let me go to the kid who's struggling or may have issues at home that I had no idea about. You know, let me talk to them and just see how they doing and maybe help them do good. So, yeah.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Amaya.
How can the board be accessible to your community, to our community?
How can the board be accessible to our community? Uh, same thing I said earlier, just, just constant messaging. Like we just got to give as many opportunities as possible and we, and we offer it. Like it's an open forum, man. We've got chairs here. People can come. Um, and it's just up to them. And we got to keep the message going though. Um, you got to keep trying. If we really want, you know, community input, we got to be out there. Maybe set up, I just thought about this randomly, but if you want to set up a table, some super, I guess, super, uh, popular area, go for it. Um, whenever this town center is created, do you want to have a table there? Go for it. Try it out. See how it goes. Um, I know Manassas Mall is not a Manassas Park district, but people probably in Manassas Park go to Manassas Mall. So possibly put a table there maybe. I don't know. Little things like that can possibly help, but.
I would do address the language barrier.
How would you? I only speak English, unfortunately. But you know, we can possibly get some people who speak both languages if they're willing to do it, of course. I'm not going to force somebody to do it, but just try to get somebody out there willing to. And then if we don't have the resources, then that's on us. We got to do better. But that's how I would do it. Just getting people who can speak both languages or even have one and one. So that's how I would do it. And I think that would be helpful. Not foolproof, but it's a start.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll do another round. Vice Mayor Banks.
A lot of times in, whether the school board or even the governing body, we do perplexing situations where the decision isn't easy. It's, it is going to actually be on a trade-off between cutting something and funding something else. How do you make these types of tough decisions? What do you, what do you rely on? What, what's your values in these decisions?
I mean, what's best for, since we are part of school, just a school district, what's best for the kids? Uh, that's the only, that's the only rationale I can go off of when it comes to making that decision. If I'm taking away resources from the kids, then I probably won't vote for it. But that's kind of the only way I can look at when it comes to my bias because I'm on the school board. You know, kids are number one priority in my mind, so we got to make sure that they're number one and everybody else is mine. And we got to put them first over something else. I got to put the kids first over, I don't know what issues that you all deal with on the daily, and I don't want to be disrespectful and give an example, but I'm just saying that the kids should come first. And that's my rationale, how I would make that tough decision. And if somebody disagrees, we as a team made that decision and that's what I'm going to sit on. And I'm not going to budge because we did it together.
Thank you.
My question has to still stem from a conversation I had with a coworker this morning who has three sons. Yeah, this one is 14. And she is pursuing her PhD in education. Yeah. And she was telling me the jurisdiction where she lives, the school board decided to reduce the threshold of passing.
Reduce the threshold of passing, like?
For the standard, standardized testing.
Okay, okay.
So my question to you is what is your thoughts on that?
Hmm. So you're reducing as in a kid can pass with a lower grade, correct? I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Right. That was my understanding.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I, I think it's, it's relative to what the threshold is too. Um, but at the same time, standardized testing is not the best way to evaluate the intelligence of a child or the work ethic of a child. I think reducing it, I would not agree with that. Um, but I think that's something that they did as a district. I don't know how to respond to that for her, but I think if they kept it the same, I guess, do you know the rationale of why they reduced it? No, just, okay. My only assumption is that they got pressure from somebody or some, some people saying, hey, this is too high. Now, what I would have done is I would have said, instead of decreasing the test rate, have the teacher have the say on whether this is, they're good or not. In Maryland, we had these things called HSAs, high school assessment, high school assessments, right? If you pass, you pass. If you fail, the teacher has a say to whether, to whether you can go on to the next class or not. Because I can be an A student, but I can be terrible at tests. I can be just terrible, like anxiety, like stuff is real. Like I, I got the security plus I was eight, I was ridiculously anxious doing that test. And I'm a grown man, so what about a kid? So I think it doesn't really answer her concern because, you know, it is what it is. It's already been reduced. But if we ever come to that issue, I think we should try to assess like, instead of reducing the passing rate, we can just keep it the same, but let that teacher have that final say. Because the teacher sees them every day or every other day and they have the best information on how to assess the child and how they work. I think that's the best way I would do it.
Thank you. I, I did think of a question that I do want to ask you. Um, we have a difficult, difficult balancing act to do, the governing body, the seven of us.
Of course.
We are responsible to the taxpayers, to staff, to infrastructure needs in the city. We fund all the departments. We fund the schools. So I couldn't help but notice your, the last sentence in your response to number one, it talks about holding us accountable and refocusing our attention. How would you do that?
Holding us accountable.
What did you mean by that?
What I mean by that? Like, like you said about the budget cuts. If the budget cut came up and you're, and you're slashing a significant amount of the school budget, like I said, refocus, refocus. These are the kids. Like that's number one. That's, that's what I mean by that sentence, that last sentence. Seriously, that's how I feel. Like focus on them unless it's a dire need that we have to do it. Reallocate something else, but keep the kids. I mean, we got to invest in them somehow, some way.
I asked because the last time the economy fell off a cliff back in 2008, every single department in the school system had to lay off.
Hmm.
It, it was serious. It was very serious. So that might be a situation where no one can refocus their attention. That's why I asked.
Yeah, I understand that completely, but I can't make, I'm not going to change my thinking off an anomaly. That's one thing that happened. We don't know when that's going to happen. We don't, we didn't know the pandemic was going to happen. We didn't know 2008 was going to happen. Things like that, catastrophes happen. And obviously things have to be done because everything was probably cut in 2008. Yeah, not just the school district. Everything was probably cut. Everybody was probably laid off. I was in eighth grade, so I don't know. But those things happen. So that's what I'm saying. Like with those situations, I understand completely.
Right.
But if it's just one thing, then I'm going to refocus it back to the schools. Because I can't refocus everything in 2008. That was, that was terrible. That was miserable.
It's also a concern to us that if the schools don't get absolutely everything they ask for, that doesn't mean that we're not placing them on a pedestal.
Cities still have to run.
Because we're very proud of our school division, very.
Cities still have to run. I understand that completely.
Yeah, okay.
I understand that completely.
We all, we all have to run.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Mensing.
What ideas do you have to improve transparency between the city and schools? And in which ways do you think the two can work together?
I don't know. I feel like I said, I don't know if I said that or not, but, um, just attending each other's meetings. Um, I don't know if it's supposed to be or not, but I know what we do in, in our tech field is one member from each team has to attend another meeting. We have to have a rep from, like I'm on, I'm on the release team. I have to attend, we have, we have to have somebody from our team attending a security meeting, right? So one person has to be able to go to those meetings and then report back what they said. Um, I think that's one thing we could do, make it mandatory for just at least one person. And they just rotate it every week, every month, whatever, however you do it. But that's one way I think we can do it to help. Because if nobody from the other side is there, you're just talking. Like you're just really just talking in circles. But if that other person is there, they can possibly object or take it back. And then we can have that dialogue. So that's what I would do.
Thanks.
No problem.
Councilmember Javed.
My next question would be on the, I guess in regards to a zero discipline policy, right? Where, um, they would suspend kids for non-violent acts, not drug-related. And do you think that kind of discipline creates a pipeline from schools to prison?
So you're, so you're saying they would suspend kids for having drugs in school? Or I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what.
Not having drugs and not, non-violence, they would be suspended.
Then what are they doing?
Well, I mean, I guess the example could be if they maybe skip too many classes or, I don't know if they would suspend that for that, but, or act out, uh, maybe hash, uh, act out in front of a teacher.
Okay, okay.
Proanity or something like that.
Well, I, I'm a firm believer of making a kid miss school for missing school. I don't, I don't see the joy in that. I mean, there were kids that I grew up with who skipped school and they got suspended for 10 days. It was like, man, I loved it. Because they didn't, they didn't want to be there in the first place.
But do you think that, that type of suspension policy creates, uh, a behavior in the kids?
Yeah, because it shows, it comes off as like you don't care about me. Seriously. I got, and I was in a, I went to school in like the richest school district in Northwest DC. I lived on Bowlin Air Force Base. My parents had that much money. They were in the military, right? Went to Francis Scott Key Elementary. I remember this because it hurts, to this day it still hurts me. I used to get bullied, right? Only black kid there. Say jokes like, you don't know your dad, all that stuff. So what do I do? Defense, I beat them up, right? I get suspended. Kids bullying me don't get nothing. But why is that? So now I feel like you don't care about me. You don't care about me. And then my parents feel like you don't care about black people. Obviously they probably, obviously they do, but I'm saying like that's how I feel. So like, if you're just suspending a kid from skipping school, you don't care about them. What we did in Charles County was, it was basically like, hey, you're going to be suspended, but it's in-school suspension. And we had a, is it an IA? I think they had a teacher assistant who was assigned strictly to that. And their job was to basically help them get their schoolwork done. Because now we're being counterproductive. We're taking them out of that situation where they might want attention, but at the same time, we're still giving them some type of instruction. They still might not want to do the work, but they're still here. Like they're still at school and they're not doing other stuff outside of school that can possibly get them in trouble. Now, we can't control what they do after school. Like I, we tried our best. We tried our best to keep them in school with a teacher who really wants them to succeed. But after that, that's all we can do. So I think that would be a better situation when it comes to the nonviolent acts. Just take them out of that situation, but at the same time, keep them in school. Um, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, this next question is one that I've seen in the media here recently and I'd like to get your opinion. Transgendered students, should they be allowed to compete, particularly male to female transgendered students, uh, in competitive female sports?
Hmm. I gotta say, I don't know. I just don't. I'm not educated enough or well-versed on the topic to speak on that yet. I'm not going to make some rash decision. You almost got me there though. I'm seriously, I'm, I'm not.
Trying to get you.
But I'm not. I say, I'm not going to do it. Like I, I don't know. To be honest, I just, I'm not aware. I don't know. I see what other states do. That's what they do, but I don't know what I would do as a district yet. Honestly, I just, I'm not aware.
That was an honest answer.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't. So, but to get the answer, um, take examples that we've seen.
Yes.
Take maybe the parents of those kids and then ask them how it may affected their kid, whether they can play or not play. So just take the examples we have and get feedback on it. And then we can make an informative decision. But I, I can't, no, no, uh-uh, mm-mm, nope. Not today, Mr. Moore.
Good answer, Mr. Vaughn. Good answer. Thank you.
What more, what more can I say? Like, nah, nah, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Councilmember Amaya.
So, um, what is your vision for education in this, in our community? Like what, what do you want to see?
I was waiting for you to ask me that. I seriously was waiting. You know, I was talking to my wife about this. I was practicing. All right, so we live, and this is very, it's a very biased answer, so I apologize by offending anybody. We live in a very tech area. I moved out here because it's technology-based, right? So what, what we can do is obviously, we probably already have those funds allocated towards technology, but can we bring?
So let me stop you a second because I know you don't know about the school system. Every child in Manassas Park has a laptop, has an.
That's, really?
They have, they have smart boards. I mean, they've had this before COVID.
Y'all are a lot better than us.
They've had it for six years.
That is awesome.
So the technology has been here for six years.
Yes. So what I, what I was going to say was, yo, y'all are so far ahead, man. I commend y'all. But either way, because we didn't have that. My, my computer, my computer credit was computer keyboarding, literally sitting on a keyboard and typing. So I'm, I commend you. I really do. But seriously, let's bring in some of these companies in Virginia who are based in Virginia, headquarters out here. Maybe they can host some type of computer bowl or something like that. We had computer bowls in Charles County where Booze Allen Hamilton, uh, who else came out there? It was some small, it was some small, um, contractor that came out, but they hosted a computer bowl. And we had beginner, intermediate and expert, uh, basically like stages. And we would have those kids compete. And even if it is computers, competitive, competition is competition. Like I don't care. I don't, you don't need to have some type of sport in there. It don't[1698.06] It don't matter to them. That's what they want to do. So that's something I think I would like to have that will probably elevate it. But technology-wise, having computers, that is awesome. You, you giving these kids no excuse, man. It's like, yo, like, you've got this. I'm pretty sure y'all, if that, maybe they provide them the hotspot too, if they really, really need it, there's places to go, hotspots, stuff like that. That's awesome. Sorry, I know I'm supposed to be refreshing, but that's like really dope, like.
Thank you.
Like, we only have one computer in my house. So like, I actually have to struggle doing work. So the fact that y'all giving that out, that's, man, that's awesome.
We'll move on to your closing statement now. Limit of two minutes, and Keith will rise and approach the podium when you have one minute left.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for having me. I honestly did not think you all would be interested in interviewing with me. And some, just some 27-year-old kid with these weird, wild thoughts with one year of teaching. I thought to be on a board, you need to have like this exuberant teaching and all these degrees and stuff like that. I seriously thought, that's what I thought about a school board was. And the fact that you all took your time out of your day and sacrificed what y'all do every day to come speak to me. Like, I actually, I actually am very thankful that you've selected my application to be able to speak with you today. Just very grateful for it. When it comes to what I want to do for the community, though, I just, I just want to keep pushing forward. Like, I don't want to be, I don't want to be satisfied with what we got. Like, I want to keep moving. Like, what we got is great. Like, when you mentioned that computers, that's awesome. But we can do more. We can do more. We can help out the kids a little bit more. We can be out there a little bit more. We can provide more services to them. Obviously, we gotta have some people willing to do it. And I'm pretty sure we will. We just gotta let them know that. And I'm really big on that teacher retention. Like, we gotta keep the teachers here. Now, if a teacher leaves because, you know, they leave the education room, that is what it is. I can't stop he or she from doing that. But if they're leaving for another district, why? Why are you leaving my district for this other district? I'm giving you, I'm giving you these things that I think that are really helpful. Why are you leaving me? Seriously. In the exit interviews, I asked them, why are you leaving me? What did I do to you? Like, did I support you? Did I not support you? We need to get this information because we want to keep them here. Like, you want kids to have the same teachers over and over and over again. Build that rapport. Kids need routine. My kids, one-year-olds, need routine. When they get off routine, they're fussy. So that's, that's it for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. We appreciate that you volunteered to come here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
And that you want to step up and serve the city. The appointments, a public hearing will be held June 1st. Tuesday evening, if you have supporters who want to provide statements of support, they can do it through email, or they can speak either in person or through GoToMeeting. We can send them a link for that. Ms. Connor, our city clerk, will provide any answers to procedural questions you have. And then the decision is made June 15th.
Okay. The question I did have about that was, who cannot speak on your behalf?
That's a good question. City attorney is not here this evening.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Like, I want my one-year-old kid up here.
Do you have anyone in mind that you were?
I mean, it's just my wife and my kids out here. That's, it's just us. So I'm saying, that's what I'm asking, who cannot speak on you? Because, you know.
Oh, your family, your colleagues, your friends.
Okay.
Everybody can speak in, in behalf.
Anybody who don't want to. Those who don't, that's who you don't want to come in.
Okay. I just wanted to get that out there for her.
I thought you were referring to having school staff come and speak for you.
No, no, no. I just, just in general, like, you know, you know, sometimes, like, when you put references down for jobs, you can't put like a family friend or something like that. So that's why.
I thought you were getting a lot more technical.
Nah, nah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're giving me too much credit, ma'am. Thank you so much, y'all.
Thanks. Okay. Do we have Mr. Paul Alexander with us yet?
I think he's sitting out.
Oh, okay, good. Welcome, Paul.
How are we doing this evening?
We're doing good.
Taking a mask off.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Well, first, first of all, we would, we would like to invite you to make an opening statement. Limit three minutes, and Keith will rise and approach the podium when you have one minute left.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Well, first off, thank you for having me this evening. Very thankful for the opportunity to reapply for the school board position. Some of the stuff, without getting too repetitive into the information that I've already sent you guys in PowerPoint or in the questions are, my motives for running for reappointment are really to, obviously, better the school system. But I also see many, many opportunities where we, the two boards need to come together more. The two boards have got to start building a more cohesive relationship, get better at communicating, working as, almost as in a unified front. Communicating, whether that's board-to-board, city manager to superintendent. There are multiple levels and tiers within both organizations where, whether it be through COVID and the, you know, inability to meet face-to-face, or through the just, in the scheduling, we're not being allowed to meet up. We've, the, the Zoom calls and the, and the non-face-to-face interaction has taken its toll, I think, on the, on the relationships that need to be present for a constructive relationship to take place. There's, we, both boards have subject matter experts, subject matter experts that advise them. And a lot of times, it helps for those subject matter experts to actually meet each other as well. A lot of times, you know, city manager will advise the board, superintendent or will advise us. And then we have a communication when there are a lot of times misinformation or confusion or collaboration can occur, you know? And we can avoid the misinformation. We can encourage the collaboration. So there's a lot more opportunity that I see that we didn't, that we're not there yet on the school board. So that's really one of the main things that's pushing me to want to, because I still, I've, being on for three years and coming in and seeing the improvements we've made, I still see where there are many improvements still left to be made. Is that, okay?
Close to three minutes.
Okay, super. We'll move into questions now. We'll do as many rounds as we can. Councilmember Omaya?
Okay. What, what motivates you to keep, keep the position that you have now?
Honestly, the opportunity to see, to, to chase the growth that I know is attainable. There are many things in the division that we've accomplished in the last couple of years. I would say one of the biggest, when I first applied, communication was really big on the, on my agenda. We felt, I felt like there was a gap in what we were hearing from the school systems to the families. We, I mean, Alana was on at the time, she remembers. We, we pressed heavy for Dr. McDade to start getting into social media. Twitter was very hard for him to first to get on board with. And I think if any of you follow him now, you'll see he, he thrives there. The school Facebook page was another opportunity where we weren't putting out many messages. We were, emails were going out. What, even in mult-bilingual, you know, we, every communication that goes out, goes out in an English and a Spanish version. But as most of us do, we ignore the emails that aren't specifically pointed directly to us. The things that like, I'm trying to try to think of a thought there, but we truly need to, we, actually, before I jump off, one of the things I'm most proud of is, and I think you guys even took advantage of it during COVID, was the broadcasting capabilities in the school board room. Prior to three years ago, we weren't even taping our school board meetings. So we would complain, nobody's watching, nobody's coming. But we weren't putting out media, you know, outlets for people to actually come and see them. So there was a little initial expense. It wasn't bad. But those are the things that kind of, you have to change with the times. You, social media and YouTube and all of these, these platforms are there, so take advantage of them. You know, Twitter's a great one because the people that want to hear from you will, they can subscribe to you. They can follow you. If they don't want to hear from you, if their kids are out of the school system, they can unfollow you. It allows them to choose whether or not to be part of your message. But in, with all of those platforms out there, we really didn't, we weren't doing a great job at that time of doing it. So that's one area where I, I feel like we've made leaps and bounds. There are still plenty of opportunities more. The city has talked about getting a director of communications. We also do not have anybody who does communications. We've talked like, this was like a year and a half ago, about potentially combining resources to try to get one because it's, it's, we, none of us can afford it. There's never the money there. So like, those are the kind of things where there's opportunities for collaboration in places that we haven't gotten to yet, where there's still, you know, things that can be done to make everything better within that district. Or not everything, but at least some things within recent.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Mr. Alexander, first of all, thank you for reapplying. My question has to do with the opportunity gap or the achievement gap. Specifically, how would you close the opportunity gap or achievement gap that exists in the district?
So to me, the opportunity and achievement gap really comes down to equity. That is a, to, equity is very much, you know, I think if most of us hear it pretty often now, it's, you know, especially if we're paying attention to the news and stuff. But equity is, to me, is access. Equity is, do you have a one, everyone knows MPCS connects and the one-to-one initiative. We, do, everyone has a laptop. Well, does everyone have internet access? Well, Comcast works with the school system to provide Wi-Fi hotspots to all families that cannot afford it. So we've, I want, I can't remember, I want to say it was up around 60 different families we've provided hotspots to, to give internet access to families. So one of the biggest things to me is making sure that everyone is starting at the same point. You're not, you know, one kid doesn't have a head start over the other. Equity, you know, I, I think can, a lot of people have different definitions of it and how they see it. But to me, it truly means everybody gets the same opportunity. What you do with that opportunity, that's up to you. But at least you were afforded that opportunity. So that gap, to me, could always be there depending on what the outcome of the race is. But closing the gap, in my eyes, with equity, at least allows everyone the same starting point. Does that make sense? Did that answer that? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Javid?
Hey, Paul, how you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Good, good. My question is gonna relate to, I guess, policing in the school system. And specifically, do you think that the presence of school resource officers is a positive influence on, or positive environment for kids to learn? And what do you think, do you think there should be more emphasis, instead of having police in the schools, have more investment towards counselors, psychologists, terrorists?
All right. So let me just write, write in this question down so I can get the two parts. So with regards to the SRO, so the school system currently has one SRO. He handles all four schools. So, in that sense, there's, most of his time is at the secondary campus. He does go down to the elementary campuses as well. I can tell you, speaking, some of the other candidates you mentioned it, speaking about what, growing up, I, we had a school resource officer at my high school. It, I actually think it was very helpful. Because again, we, it was, it shows a human side of the police and, you know, and the position of authority. Do I think that, I mean, the middle, the elementary school even has gone as far as to have like, outside of SROs, like, the fire department comes down and they'll have lunches with the kids. So I think any, anytime you get those people into the school system and around kids to see the personal side of them, it's always better. With regards to the discipline aspect of an SRO, they're very limited in the sense of what they are supposed to be doing on the policing standpoint. A lot of that is handled by the administration. The SROs would really get involved if, obviously, if like an active shooter or something like that were to come in. But the SROs, even, even if the police are tipped off about drugs, the police actually come in for that. The SRO wouldn't be the one that's gonna go open the locker and check. So when it comes to counselors, absolutely. I think all kid, there's never going to be a time where I think any of us would ever say, we want less counselors, well, we want less emotional support, especially with COVID. I know with my own kids, one of them, at the very beginning, was having a tough time. And we reached out to the elementary school, who put us in touch with this counselor, who gave us some amazing coping mechanisms. My, my wife was actually even doubtful at first. She was like, I don't know if this, if, you know, do we need to talk to a psychologist? But even after getting all this stuff from the school and working through it, it actually came out swimmingly. It was so, obviously, every addition has a price tag. That's what it comes down to. You know, certain, can we, can we use S R funding? Can we, you know, S R two's, you know, funding is getting ready to expire. S R three, how we've got some more time with. Can we use those to get through, to bridge these kind of higher traumatic, you know, areas? Absolutely. But there's also the, what is sustainable? You know, can we fund positions with, you know, in a budget where once the government funding has gone away, we can continue to meet those kids' needs? So I think you'll always find, I mean, emotional support for kids, you know, I have a teenage daughter, so I need emotional support. So, but like, if you get to, I think you'll always need that. And we'll always want more. I mean, that's, and that's, you know, sadly, you know, a lot of times you guys see in the budget, we're like, can we have more of these? Can we have more of these? Sometimes that number's not there. If it's a mandated state, you know, funded, unfunded mandate as we all see them, then we, you know, we have to do it. But if, if there's opportunities where we can consolidate campuses, like MPE and Cougar share one, you know, same with the high school, like, those proximity allows for certain sharing of resources. So, did that cut?
No, yeah, you touched on that.
Councilmember Mensing?
You mentioned in your opening statement that improvements have been made with communication between the two boards.
Yeah.
What would you see over the past three years? Did you see that improved? What worked and what didn't?
So I, I would love to have Dr. McDade here to see his face because when I came on, and Alana, you'll probably remember this, I was really pushing the superintendent listening tours. And you remember when we were doing, like, and for those who don't know it, Dr. McDade would go out through the city, multiple, I want to say it was about once a quarter. I think it's four or five times a year, he would go out and he would just do an open mic. You know, anyone could come in, ask him any question they wanted. He would answer to the best of ability, or if he couldn't, he would get that information back to them. It, the first few were fantastic. I mean, like, it was a lot of people. The last few were like one to two people. So it, it really took a nosedive. And so I don't, and it's not, I don't believe it, so I wouldn't say that was a ringing success. It was one of those that we, we're, you know, I also don't see it as a failure, though, because any opportunity to get the superintendent out there is an opportunity where people see that accessibility. I will never forget when my daughter started at Cougar, seeing superintendent at the bus line waving to kids made a huge impression on me. Like, because I grew up in Fairfax. And so the superintendent in Fairfax, you know, is, you know, it's the great and powerful Oz. You never saw him. He was just the voice. So, and there were deputy superintendents and, you know, so, but, so that level of access was huge to me. Again, kind of not to revisit the other, the things that we've made grounds on, but, you know, a lot of our electronic communications have significantly improved. We've started doing, we've done way more parent surveys than we have in the past. I'm sure the central office doesn't appreciate doing all of the data digging and mining that goes through it, but those are the things that really helped the school board to kind of understand what's going on. You don't want to take the finger of the pulse being on a Face Group page because typically, as we all know, the Facebook page is where you will get the negative comments and the, you don't hear the positives. So if you base your judgment on, you know, those kind of forums, you, you aren't going to get the full picture. So like, and those are the instances that we feel like we've really gained in our, in our perspective of, of reaching out. There is still apathy within the community, and it's, we need families to come out. We need voices to be heard. We, the school offers translation services that, that some families utilize. I don't know if you've seen it, but they actually have this case of, it's like the UN. They hand out 50 headsets, and there will be a person with a microphone. So like, if we have a speaker, there will be a person translating into the microphone. And everyone who's got a headset is getting the translation version of it so that they can get real-time translating. Like, so the, the school does go out of its way to try to make people more comfortable with, in bridging the communication barriers. But there's still so many more ways that, and, and do I know, if I knew what the solution was, by now, we would have done it. We're, we're still kind of throwing darts at a board and hoping something will stick. It's, you know, we've tried the superintendent's tour. That didn't work. That's actually the second time we've tried it. So there's all kinds of things where, you know, honestly, kind of regurgitating, keeping up with the times and how technology is reaching mediums is really one of the best ways we can do it.
Thanks.[1677.44]
Thanks.
My question, as you probably know, is about the importance of communication and cooperation between the cities and the schools, especially for issues like financial best practices and for remaining compliant with Virginia law. Now, what can you personally do to help improve the relationship between the city and the schools regarding those two things?
So let me do, let me write that down because, and that's a two parter. Okay. So you're absolutely right about kind of what in the opening statement, the communication, the two boards need to have a much more cohesive group. I think COVID is not an excuse, but it did, it was a hindrance in our ability to be a team. We used to do annual retreats together. We haven't been able to get in the same room. There's many things we used to do. Ms. Kirkland's not here, but at one point, like we discussed, almost like a buddy system she'd, you know, had thrown out where, you know, each school board member has like a buddy on the school board that they would kind of get together with, whether it's at Preston's or just to have dialogue and kind of bounce things off of. I think, you know, once, once the, once we step away from our roles and actually have dialogue and go out to dinner and talk and work through things, you, we get through a lot more, we can cut through a lot of red tape. We can cut through a lot of perceptions of, oh, I'm not getting the full picture here. Or you get perspective. I would say there have been many times when I was first applying, there were all, I had all kinds of ideas of, oh, you should do this. We can get, we can get businesses to sponsor us and we can do this. And then I realized once I got in, well, that's against the law. We've got three, you know, businesses that have already tried and to be honest with you, the banners that they hang in the stadium generate about $50 a year. Like, so there were all of these misconceptions that I had. So, but coming in and meeting and having candid conversations, I think you guys would agree, we don't get to really have dialogue in, you guys don't get to really talk in these forum settings. We don't really get to talk in our settings. It has to be outside of the chambers before you can, and it has to be one-on-one so you're not violating any sort of meeting rules to be able to have discussion. And then those discussions come back to the group as a whole and we report on it. So that is something where I feel like just at our area, we could drastically improve on. And now with the restrictions from the governor coming in, being lifted, we can actually get back to that. It was something we talked about a year ago and then got basically put on ice. I sincerely believe, all of us are volunteers. Like, you know, people don't realize that. There's, you're not cashing some massive paycheck. In fact, it's probably costing you money to be on the board. So like that's what people, a lot of people think that like you, everyone's up here is like, you know, we're not, you know, we're not paid. Like it's, it's really nothing. So understanding that you guys are volunteers, we're volunteers, we're all doing this because we care about our community. So having that shared recognition of that show, at least gives us the starting point to now move forward. And then aside from that, talking about the people that do get paid, I firmly believe I want that, Laszlo, yeah, there's, I was going to say, meeting with Dr. Saunders, like I believe that there's, we need to start anew with getting, you know, the heads of our organizations on the same page and in the same team, to be able to work collectively together to, you know, it's, it's, you know, Laszlo can give us insight that this is where the city revenue is looking. So, you know, it would be easier for us to then come up with a realistic ask on what, you know, the budget is. Now, I don't, none of us want to put you guys on the spot and be like, we want $13 million. And then it's really, you know, and then you have to go, well, we can do 12, four, you know, like that, nobody wants that. So having that information and working collectively at least gives us the opportunity to put a reasonable ask in there and not, not give anybody that gotcha moment that seems to bite everyone. And then it just leaves a sour taste in your mouth and to be honest with you, it causes distrust that lingers and it's very, very hard to overcome. So I really feel between the two offices, hopefully when the new place is built too, there'll be a lot more work together. And then even Dr. Saunders, you know, we've discussed with her, you know, during the interview process even about her coming down to the governing body meetings and giving the status of the schools, but providing that information so to proactively give it to you so you don't have to seek it out or if there's something specific you're looking for, she's out, she's here to answer it or you, you know, if it might spark something you hadn't even thought about or give you a perspective of why we were asking for something. I can tell you, and I don't mean to be long-winded, but I apologize. Laszlo made a comment a couple, this was about a year ago, and it really opened my eyes when it came to the school budget process about the fire department having to rent their flame retardant clothing or lease it, wasn't it? That blew my mind. Like the fact that we couldn't, that our fire department has to lease our, the flame retardant clothing to keep them alive. Like that shows, it gives you that ability, it takes you out of the school board world and all of a sudden you're like, okay, it's not just, look what he's up against. You know, I'm a component within his organization, but this is the stuff that he's also, and these are the competing priorities that he's up against. So he might be telling me no, but he's telling me no because I don't want somebody to be burnt to death. You know, like, so, you know, and I don't mean to take, say that like, you know, so coldly, but that's, to me, that's, it really was an eye-opening experience. And that all came about from the meeting about City Center at Cougar. I believe that was in that discussion that came out. So it's like being involved, going to these meetings and listening to the people that are actually in the know gives you a huge perspective on, and allows you to then guide your decisions.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hampton?
Just want to ask a question I haven't asked anybody else yet.
Okay.
So what do you see as the major pain points or challenges that are facing the school system, that currently facing the school system? And how would you, how do you think or how do you propose to tackle those?
So there's a couple. I would say, first one, there's the reopening of the school system. I mean, we've been off for a year. We're bringing kids back in who have been at home for the most part for over 12 months. In some cases, it'll be about 18 months before they're back in the school system. There are, there are aspects of, did they gain the education that they needed to advance grades? So there's the determination of assessing where our kids really are. That's going to be one issue that we come up with. Along with reopening is the physical security aspect of it. Our, you know, can we continue to keep the sanitizing up the way it needs to be? Can we continue to keep our buses wiped down during a bus driver shortage? Can we continue to operate in a post-COVID world the way we did pre-COVID? So there's, there's expenses associated with that. There's procedural changes associated with that. There's mandates from the federal government, from the state government. So there's all kinds of mandates that we're going to be up against. So it is really, it is a collaborative effort essentially with staff and central office that really helps us to identify where we're, where are we keeping track and where we are failing? Where are we falling behind? There are, using certain examples, we've had to pull people from other areas to help out. I think a great example is in the transportation office. They, when they weren't running kids to the, you know, to, because of school being out, they were delivering food. So using that same mindset of, you know, pulling people from other areas, it means resource sharing and from within the schools would have to take place. We can't afford to hire people specifically for it. And so you've really got to ask, you know, people wear multiple hats. And in this division, that you see that a lot, especially in the central office. I've seen, you know, you've seen the associate superintendent, you know, one day filling in at crosswalks because the crosswalk guard called out. So there, you know, there's going to be a very much an all hands on deck kind of moment where people are going to be asked not only to give 100%, but also 100% might not be the 100% you were doing last year or 50% of it might be, but 50% might not be. There's, there's several things that we're going to have to do within the division to continue to, that we've never done before that are going to take us out of our comfort zone. One of the other big challenges that we're looking in is the central office rebuild. And by that, I mean, I actually did the math. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and over the last two years, we've had 10 major positions turn, whether it be a principal, associate superintendent of education, special projects, finance, we've gone through two, you know, superintendent. There are a ton of, of high-level positions that are either currently are unvacant, have somebody within them for a year or maybe at the most two years. So those roles are all people that need support. So that, that's another reason to kind of answer your question of why I'm interested in staying on the board was to provide continuity for the board due to get through this trend, this period where we have, you know, so many new faces. You know, Pam Calso was just appointed to the superintendent of learning, associate superintendent of learning last week. So that immediately opens up the vacancy at the high school. If we fill that from a vice president or a vice president, a vice principal role, now we've opened up a VP role. So there's this, there's a lot of turnover going on right now and we've got a few months to basically fill those roles, get them nailed down and support Dr. Saunders as much as we possibly can so that she's, you know, in a position to succeed.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Banks?
Welcome, Paul. Thank you for applying for reappointment.
Thanks, sir.
My question's about the students, I'm the special education students and the English learner students.
You're fading away, Preston. Can you start again with the question?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay. Sorry about that. There's a storm going on. What we need is a policy which you create to address the needs of our decreasing special education students and English learner students?
So the SPED and EL kids are obviously a, you know, a portion of the student body that, it's interesting because, you know, if our enrollment continues to go down, but the cost of supporting our SPED and EL kids is going up. So it's been very, it's difficult because I know, you guys know this because a lot of times we have to explain like, well, why is, you know, enrollment down, but you're asking for more money? So a lot of, you know, that is one area with SPED and EL that we've got to look at. The landscape of our staff changes every year. You know, we're in one of those, we're in the position, and I'm going to take the long way to get to your answer. When we go out to recruiting fairs, we don't know what, we can't offer like a position right on the spot. We don't know what vacancies are going to be, you know, Fairfax can use an algorithm that says, we're going to on average need seven calculus teachers, so we're just going to hire seven calculus teachers. You know, they have that money and that large enough pool to make those determinations. We end up having to take a more reactive approach. And so a lot of times what we have to do in order to meet these requirements for the SPED kids and for the English learners is to really shift labor. You know, it is to, you know, whether it's eliminate a position here and gain a position here or it's to move a person or share resources, we have to be much more agile and reactive than we'd like to be. But that's just with the size of our district and with the available funding, that's really all we can do. So it's more often a reaction to an action. So we will, as the SPED continues, as SPED kids go up, we might lower, you know, a teacher or an aide in another area or we'll increase aides into that area depending on how the others go. Like you guys know, I think our sixth grade class is the biggest class we've ever had. So there, you know, a lot of the, you know, some of the assistance we needed at MPE last year, we don't need there now. We need it at MP, at the middle school. So like those, that shifting of resources allows us the flexibility to handle these surges and almost that let these, let the staff travel with the grades as the demand goes up.
Thank you, Preston. We'll, we'll try for another full round. The clock's ticking.
I can go, I apologize for.
No, that's, that's fine. Councilmember Amaya?
So going back to the communication between the boards, what do you think was creating the miscommunication?
Honestly, there, I think there were a handful of things. You know, there's a lack of interaction, I think is the biggest one, is a huge one. There's also, you know, I, I'm not personally friends with people on the board, but I, you know, I'll, you know, I'll see Alana at Preston's and I'll stop by and say, hey, to her, you know, like if I see Preston on the street, I'll grab him. Like a lot of times, you know, we'll have a conversation and then I'll take that back to board and be like, hey, well, I heard this. And then all of a sudden that becomes, you know, maybe I misconstrued it. I didn't clearly articulate the contents of the conversation. So a lot of times, or there have been instances where, you know, oh, I saw Paul and Alana at Preston's, you know, I wonder what they were talking about. Like, you know, like, so there's, there's got to be that, there has to be transparency, I think first and foremost in the communication. And that's why I think it's so imperative that one-on-one meetings occur, even two-on-one, two and two meetings are fine as long, that doesn't qualify as a meeting. It's as soon as we hit that three number, then we violated, you know, laws. So as long, having these small group meetings to, to give everyone that comfort level and to bring people up to speed to, you know, hey, I made this, we voted on this in the school board and it upset you guys, tell me why. What did, you know, maybe we can clear up why this happened. There's a lot of that in it, that, that lack of interaction that happens that we don't, in fact, you know, with Councilmember Moore, we joked, talked about after the, you know, even after the selection process is over, regardless of the outcome, I'd love to, you know, have your ear for 30 minutes to kind of just tell you what I've learned over these. I mean, the, this is a, this is a role where you spend the first 12 months really learning your way. I'm sure you, as the new members here, you know, it's, it's, the first 12 months is just a, it's a, it's a blur. You're trying to understand the laws. You're trying to know what you can do. Am I allowed to email the group? Do I, do I only email the chair or the mayor? Like there's all those kinds of things. So that, the miscommunications and the, the lack of flowing communication, we, you know, don't operate in a bubble. We need, both need to be in one large bubble, not two separate ones. And I think that, that environment has been lingering for multiple years now and we need to kind of pop that and get into one. Because there's, we work for you guys. So we need to be able to understand, to not just fight tooth and nail for the school, which is really what you're asking us to do, but at least if we're going to fight tooth and nail and bother you guys and make you mad, like why are they annoying us for so much money? At least understand why we're fighting tooth and nail. Like to be honest with you, I don't feel like I'm, I'm not doing my job if I'm not fighting and fighting and fighting for the schools. So, and that might become a nuisance to you guys. At one point, you're like, just laid off. But at least, at least I know I did what you appointed me to do at that time. So.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Mr. Alexander, transgender students in sport and competitive sports, what is your position? Particularly those transgender students that are going from male to female, should they be able to compete with other students, female students competitively?
So I can tell you, and I would say that, I don't know if there's a good way to answer this question, but the best way I can tell you to answer it is the state law requires that provisions be given to the child that whatever gender they identify as is the preference they are given. So I can say, I can't really give, you know, what's right or wrong, but I can tell you the state law mandates that if a child, if a male identifies as female, then he's allowed or he, she is allowed to use the female restroom. Like that, that's the Virginia law. So regardless of any of our personal beliefs, it's, it comes down to what's best for that child and how that child feels and that law protects them in a way that allows them to do that.
Would they be allowed to compete competitively in sports?
That is the way the current law is written now. Obviously, in certain, certain states like Delaware, that's being challenged and I think we're all watching to see what that challenge is going to pan out. And there's both, there's arguments for both sides, so I completely understand. I think most of us, nobody wants to be the first in this instance. You know, obviously being risk averse, we all want to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to let us, open us up to a lawsuit. So it's, you know, any kind of a liability. So we're all kind of standing back. Again, the law right now allows it, but, you know, once the Delaware case happens, then maybe that will be challenged, but for now, that's the way the law is written now.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Javid?
Yeah, I guess my next question is going to be in regards to the technology. You know, the district does an excellent job with laptop, with every student, canvas and all that. But do you think that hinders the child's educational experience, the technology? Is it too much or do we, do we have, where is the balance between technology and human interaction and going back to the chalkboard days?
Right.
And do you think we should double down on technology? Like what's the policy stance on there?
So, I mean, obviously, you know, the one-to-one initiative, all the students have, even down to kindergarten, have devices. Absolutely, I mean, personally, I believe that there's value and, but there has to be a balance. You sit in on a Zoom class and you can hear the chaos sometimes and then sometimes you can, it's, you know, it's completely orderly. There has to be that balance. I, I love the devices. I think that, you know, from a, from a budget standpoint, I will tell you, they're much cheaper than textbooks. Renewing a software license is a lot cheaper than buying all new textbooks for a new grade every year. So and from a, from a cost-saving standpoint, it's a much better option. That doesn't mean that you can't use devices without, you know, in the classroom, human interaction, which is much more how I would prefer to see it. I, I want the teachers there. I want them interacting with the kids. You know, we've, you know, I'm sure all of us have had to watch within our, on our day job, some sort of training video or, you know, and, and when you are just feel like you're sitting there watching and you're disconnected and you don't have that interaction, you're, you're not going to take as much out of it. I, you know, I'm one of those people where I memorized when I was taking a test, I could remember the answers. when I was taking a test, I could remember the answers to tests by almost hearing it in my teacher's voice. Like I remembered when they said this, and now I can, you know, regurgitate it when needed. So those are the kind of things that I feel like there's got to be a balance. I do not think that technology is the end-all, be-all. I do not think that it's, you know, if you, if we've handed them a Chromebook, then we've provided them an education. Absolutely not. It's simply one tool that can be used in an arsenal of tools, whether that's smart boards, whether or not, I mean, like when we were kids, it was the overhead projector on the, you know, thing. Now, now they've got smart boards and, you know, on their, where they can just write and erase, project stuff from their laptops. I mean, the, my children are masters now with, with almost all of that Microsoft Office and, um, you know, pretty much anything on Google and with related to Chrome. So there, there's value. And to be honest with you, more, even in the, in my professional world, I see, I'm, I get more, uh, all of a sudden Google Doc email links sent to me that, that, you know, 10 years ago, I wasn't in work getting Google Docs sent to me. So these kids are actually learning things that are taking place in the workforce that will help them along the way. So there is value, I, in as far as in my own personal opinion, to the technology, but you absolutely have to have that teacher interaction. There's, there's nothing that can substitute that.
We're unfortunately not gonna make it through the second round. So we'll go on to your closing statement.
Harmony doesn't mind. She, I said Harmony doesn't mind. She can blame. That's fine.
A closing statement, limit two minutes.
All right. Well, again, thank you so much. I apologize if the answers went long. Feel free, if you, um, I don't know if we're allowed to, but I'm more than happy to answer questions later if there's things you want to add on or clarifications. Um, regardless of the outcome, I have enjoyed the last three years. Uh, I will say, um, to the applicants coming in, I wish all of you luck and absolutely the best. Cause we're, like I said, we're all volunteers here. So all we want is what's best for our kids. So we all have a vested interest in our community and our schools. And so I really, you know, wish nothing but success for whoever gets picked. Um, I truly wish Dr. Saunders the best of luck as well. I know I'm very excited to see the, the new ideas and the innovative stuff that she's gonna bring on board. Uh, I will say her, um, I know you mentioned in a couple of interviews, and we didn't get a chance to, so might be able to slide this in, like, um, she has connections with, with many, many, many local businesses. And one of the things we're really want, like someone mentioned is the vocational training, like internships. These are the things that we were really looking for. So hopefully those are some of the things that we'll be able to introduce in the near future to allow our kids, you know, not that a path other than just, you know, go find a job, you graduated, or you're going to college. There's gotta be that, those kids in between that we want to take care of and that hopefully bolster on the profile of our graduates. So.
Paul, thank you so much.
That was my pleasure.
For coming. Thanks for signing up again. Thanks for your current service.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you guys for hearing me out. I apologize for going long.
Nope, no problem. Public hearing, um, for the appointment is held June 1st. Um, please feel free to have your supporters send in written statements, or they can come in person or through GoToMeeting and make that statement live. Uh, Lena Connor, our city clerk, she'll answer any procedural questions that you might have. Uh, the vote will be on June 15th.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do you really need one?
I guess we do.
Yeah. You okay?
Oh yeah, we have one more.
Yeah, we got one more. Yeah. Next, we have Harmony Bisco. Welcome.
How are you?
Good. And we want to thank you. We all thank you for stepping up to volunteer to, to serve the city.
Thank you.
That's super. Uh, first, uh, we invite you to have a brief opening statement of three minutes and Keith will walk to the lectern when you have one minute left.
Fantastic. Thank you. Um, my family and I moved here five years ago, and I can be completely honest when I said that as a military family, the very first thing that I do when I am moving to a new city is go online and look at the schools. I don't look at the water company. I don't check out the local government. I wish I could say I did. But the first thing that I've ever done in my husband's 22 years of service is go online and look at every single education site that has to do with that city before we move. And one of the reasons why we moved to Manassas Park was for the schools. And it wasn't because the schools looked awesome on paper. They did not look awesome on paper. It was because when I called, I had the pleasure of speaking with our assistant superintendent directly, who addressed my concerns about why the scores were so low. And he actively said, you know, we have a strong minority population who struggle with language acquisition, and their test scores do not show how incredible our school district is. And coming from a school district as a teacher that had a lot of students who were bilingual and who were ESOL students, I understood exactly what he was talking about. And so our children who had grown up all over the country with lots of different people were excited to move here because unlike a lot of the other school districts, the diversity that was offered in the community and the schools was a draw point. And I really feel like as someone who has been all over the country and chosen where they lived with a lot of detail and thought, looking at our schools is one of the most important things that parents do before they move. And if we strengthen our schools, we are gonna strengthen our community. It's gonna build up our businesses. It'll build up our tax revenue. It'll build up every single part of what we are already, which is pretty great. I mean, the secondary thing was like, hey, our, our police department must be amazing because we're like in the top 10 safest communities. So when you think about why you would want to serve on something that takes extra time, that is going to add more things to do to your already busy schedule, that is gonna give you something more to think about every single day, being on the school board is probably one of the most important positions that you can volunteer to do.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we'll start our questions with Vice Mayor Banks.
Hi, Harmony.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for your interest for serving on the school board. Um, my question is about our, our schools, uh, increasing special education students and English learner students population. What ways or policies would you create to address the needs of our special education students and English learners?
So to support them, obviously having maybe, um, teachers as part of their professional development, offering more outside professional development to get them certified in ESOL services, to get them certified in special education, so that you're not trying to find a teacher who is already licensed and paying, you know, possibly more money for a, an above teacher, but getting them their professional development points and encouraging them, saying that 10 or 15 of those points every year have to be from this specific area. I think it's as easy as, as asking the teachers to do something they're already having to do in order to maintain their licensure, as well as including a little bit of extra funding to give them quality training to serve those students who are most in need.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yep. So as you know, as you mentioned, this is, I, for me, city council and school board are the most important positions you can volunteer for in the city. So with that being said, and I know your years of being a teacher, you've probably dealt with parents that are just very easygoing to those that are just challenging and personality building.
Yeah.
So with that being said, tell me about a time where you received criticism from a stakeholder, whether that's a teacher, another teacher, a parent, whomever.
Absolutely. Um, I feel like I could give you examples from a, a bunch of them and trying to like think of them. And, and here's, I think, when I think about when, when someone comes to me with criticism, whether it's constructive or, or not constructive, they are coming for my, um, my thoughts because the person they are defending is their everything. You know, whether that child is right or wrong, or whatever happened, that is somebody's precious little baby who is the most perfect thing that ever walked the face of the planet. And as a teacher, I've, from the beginning, I was a, a later blooming teacher. So I did it as a secondary career choice. Um, and I remember very clearly having a principal, my, my very first principal who was amazing. She would stick up for you, um, at, at any meeting, at any time, but she was also going to come to you and tell you when you were wrong. And I had developed this really incredible project that I thought was gonna be amazing. And the kids did love it. It was about World War II. And I said, pick a technology that you think is great that came from World War II, we're gonna build it. And I specified a model of the technology. And the kids went crazy. They went bananas. It was nuts. It was great. Um, and one student walked in with a bazooka, a custom-built, large-sized bazooka. Another student walked in with a handmade, like gun that stood on, on a, on a, on a desk. And of course, here comes my students down the hallway, and here comes my principal down the hallway after. And I feel like when she came to me and expressed how she felt from her opinion, and saying how, what that looked like and how that would go over with the parents, I took that all in because what she has to say is something important. Whether, whether I agree with her at the moment, or agree with any of the parents that are coming to me and saying things that they are criticizing me about, they're coming to me with the utmost desire to make sure that our, the school, the child, um, are completely taken care of. And so as long as you look at it like that, as long as you can view it from that person's point of view, then you can follow up with a, I hear what you're saying. Let me hear more. Please tell me more. And how can I fix it? And I, I explained to her my point of view, and she listened and she said, well, this is obviously one of those times when it's a severe miscommunication. And it was a really helpful conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will ask the same question I asked everyone.
Sure.
Because it's very important to me. Um, communication, cooperation between the cities, the city and the schools. It's important because we need to make sure that we're on the same page for financial best practices, that we're remaining compliant with Virginia law. Uh, what will you do personally? What can you do to help improve the relationship between the city and the schools?
So I feel fully that, that this is, um, this is a, a position that you are there, like I said, for the other parents or anybody's gonna criticize me. We're all here for the best interest of the schools. And so in, in, in my honest opinion, transparency, communication, speaking to someone, saying things like, hey, I heard this. Is that true? And having the confidence that you are gonna tell me whether it's true or not. Um, bringing together the entire community, inviting, um, the students to be a part of things, inviting the parents to be a part of things, and making sure that you know that you're hiring people for the school board to fight for the schools. And so if you're hiring me to fight for the schools, then you're also gonna trust that the things I'm asking you for financially matter. Cause I'm not gonna come to you with a frivolous item. Our school board is not gonna get together and say, how can we get the money from the, you know, the government? It's, we're all in it together attitude, just like we are in all parts of education. It's, it's like we're a sink or swim. And so, um, a high, a rising tide is gonna flow all boats. So we might as well get together and tie it down, um, in fighting and, and talking about things, you know, behind each other's backs, things like that. That's like high school. And we're all here to go ahead and get together and be a part of a team. And I feel like you're a team, we're a team, but we can all get together, be on the same committees. We can have things together that we're both passionate about. Why, why not combine things? There's no better common interest than the children of our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Mancy?
Um, the city is still recovering from years of bad financial decisions. In order to give more money to the schools, what would you cut from the city services and why?
I think that's probably one of those questions I have to honestly say, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what sort of services you'd had. I, I would have to look through it together with the school board and with you and say, hey, what do you think is something that we can, nobody wants to go, you know what, let's cut all those jobs. But it's, it's one of those things you have to face difficult decisions. Nobody is going to make friends with every single person in our community by being a part of the government or being a part of the school board. But your job is to serve in the best interest. So to ask, where would you cut things? I wish I could tell you I'm well-versed in, in all the programs and, and things that you have going on. But I feel like if we have a program or, or something happening in our community, it's probably important or was important at some time. So my thought process would be let's consistently evaluate where we're spending money, how we're spending money, and, and where it's going and, and look to see where you can, just like any family budget, you take a little money out here, a little money out there, and sometimes you can carve out quite a bit.
Councilmember Javid?
Hey. Um, my question is in regards to, I guess, the school resource officer. And do you think their presence kind of creates, um, an environment, especially for the minority population, um, that does not create an, uh, environment of, I guess, um, a positive environment for the kids' learning experience?
So.
Sorry, the second part to that.
Okay.
And then do you think that instead of having this, you know, resource officer as a disciplinary action, should we invest more funds to the counselors, therapists, and psychologists?
So I don't, I don't feel like they need to be mutually exclusive. I don't feel like our, our resource, I knew the old, the prior resource officer, he was always present at all of our trainings, um, when we had our, um, Alice trainings. And I've seen him as my students, my children have gone through the high school, seen him interact in the school itself. And I don't ever feel like I've witnessed it personally where he was a disciplinary figure. I feel like he was a presence and a positive presence. The kids would walk by and give him a high five and talk to him. Um, so I don't feel like you need to be like, you know what, we either need to get rid of the police officer who's in the school, or we need to get rid of the counselors. They could have both as a support. The more community members you have as a part of your schools, the better off our children are. What's better than seeing somebody in a school in a police uniform who's there for you, who's gonna talk to you? I mean, I know a lot of students who would go to talk to a, a resource officer because of who they are. Like it's a male, it's a presence, it's there. Um, it's somebody who maybe they can talk to, maybe they can't feel comfortable talking to a counselor. Maybe their friends make fun of them for going to the counselor. The more interested adults who you have to love and care for your students, the better off you are. So I don't feel like either way, if you have a terrible resource officer and a terrible counselor, I could argue for either one of those. But, um, any sort of like community involvement we have in our schools, what better to get the kids protected and served and taken care of?
And I agree. I mean, the resource officers are, you know, they, they do good here. But, uh, you know, my experience from, I grew up in New York, New York.
Durbin Canadake.
So up to.
Yeah, absolutely.
It scared us.
Yeah. And I feel like that's, oh, go ahead.
Basically, it scared us to go up to them because there was a, I guess, that stigma, right?
Yeah. But I feel like we're different. We're Manassas Park. We're small. You know, that's where we're so different than every other place, where we can do things different than every other place. You know, maybe have the, encourage the resource officer to take more of a part in certain sort of counseling activities or exercises and talking and things like that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Ms. Bisco, how would you specifically close the opportunity gap or achievement gap that exists in the district?
That's a giant question. That's a very large question. I feel like, um, every school system in America right now is struggling to close the achievement gap. Um, in our district, I feel like instead of playing to the students and the community that we want to have, we need to start playing to the students and the community that we do have. Honestly, taking advantage of the skills and, um, resources they have available already. Many of our students are bilingual. Um, many of our students are go-getters when it comes to things they're interested in. We have a one-to-one initiative. All of the students who are coming up from kindergarten, what, a couple of years ago, have had a computer or a system designated to them since they were tiny, teeny people. Um, starting to implement things like student-led programs where the kids are in charge, giving them a stakeholder position in our school district, making them take ownership of our schools, of their learning, giving them, you know, that sense of power. Kids fight back because they want, they feel, people feel powerless. They feel like they have nothing else. You're being told what to do. Giving them that power back instead of constantly taking it from them, letting them make some of the rules. If you have a child who's invested in a project or a learning, a learning partnership, they will go above and beyond and they will achieve. Um, I had students who, we, in, in fifth grade, read to students in kindergarten. And so when we had them ready to go and we couldn't see the kindergartners for a while, I had my students, and most of the students in my classroom were second language learners, um, I would give them headsets and I would say, here is a book. Before we go over there, I want you to practice reading this book because that kindergartner is gonna expect you to know how to read that book really well, right? Cause you want to know it inside and out. And I would say, let's record it. Let's have you record it. Let's make a video for them. Maybe we can share it with the other classrooms. Those kids I've never seen work harder to learn how to say certain words, to learn what certain words mean, to speak with inflection and intonation. Um, and to give them a purpose for their learning and giving them that control. Those kids made excellent progress language-wise that year. And I mean, every year we did it, but yeah. So I think giving them control is really key.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Amaya?
Okay. I see that you were a teacher here in 2017. What made you switch positions and go to Bristol?
So yep, I was here from 2017 until, um, 2020 for three years. And I have to be completely honest, um, I had some personal family issues occurring. And there was, there's a lot of things that go along with teaching at our schools that are, it, it takes a lot to give. The teachers here are incredible. We have one of the best teacher base I've ever seen in my entire teaching career. Um, and so it, I, I And so it, I, I would love to say it was the pay, but it wasn't. It was everything else that went along with the job. The, there was some lack of consistency with things that were occurring in, in the school as far as behavior problems and things like that. There were things that occurred that would make it just that much more challenging to go ahead and do your job. The teacher turnover rate is huge and the impact to the teachers who stay is staggering because every single time you get a new teacher, they are great. I cannot take anything away from a new teacher. Everybody has to start as a new teacher somewhere, but they take a lot of help. They need mentorship, they need quality time, they need somebody to give them resources and provide them with tips and tools. And to provide that is, is like a second job. And so the more that teachers left, the more it fell upon the teachers who were staying, the older, more experienced teachers to continue to support those new teachers. And it just became the thought of like, I don't know that I can continue to provide my best services to the school district at this time. And so I started to look around and I chose another job, not because of the people I worked with, not because of our administration, not, I mean, the pay I would say was like the third or fourth on, on the list of things. It was there, but it's not that, it's that closing gap. The more you've been in Manassas Park, the more that, that pay raise gap starts to close on, on you. And it does look a lot more appetizing to go look elsewhere, but I probably would have stayed longer had there been more support and more available items to help with the teachers.
Thank you.
Round, Vice Mayor Banks.
Hi. Okay. So that, that answer you just provided kind of gets into my question about teacher turnover. How would you improve teacher retention? Because we lose teachers every year.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that everybody wants to say it's the pay, but I believe very firmly that if we start recognizing the experienced teachers and helping give them incentives to stay, you'll provide more mentorship and opportunities for other teachers to stay because they'll have that help to continue moving forward. By creating a strong mentoring program in and of itself, it doesn't have to be a separate mentor, but I've been in districts where they've hired experienced teachers to go into a classroom once a week, twice a week, to, to watch a new teacher, to be with them, to hold their hand, to cry with them, to laugh with them. Those types of things make all the difference. Creating better access to curriculum and resources, having more transparency to the teachers. Sometimes things happen and the teachers are like, I don't even know what just happened. Nobody tells them what's happening until it comes right down the line. Building staff cohesiveness, getting students and parents' expectations of accountability and involvement in the schools built up. Offering outside professional development. It's great to have in-house professional development. I'm not trying to take anything away from the teachers who provide that, but sometimes a fresh, new outside look and not just at a, at a consortium where it's a once, a once time thing, but offering that to get outside. Having consistent protocols and, and student-school climate where the teachers feel like everybody's contributing and collaborating and communicating with each other openly. And, and obviously the incentives, like pay is nice. It's nice to get a raise. It's nice to have that. Maybe looking at the way that we offer raises, I know that was a, a big grumble point. When you got to be an experienced teacher, what was the incentive to stay if you're just going to compress my, my salary as I get a little bit more experienced? And it's not that teachers go into it for the money, but it makes buying all the supplies that we have to get into the classroom a lot easier to purchase. So I, I would start there.
Thank you. Councilmember Hampton.
So this question, how do you intend, right now you're a practitioner, you're a teacher, you're a practitioner, you're boots on the ground. How do you intend to make that transition from the practitioner to the executive level, which is pretty much what the school board is?
Sure. Like I said, I wasn't always a teacher. So I've been transitioning as a military wife my entire life. I've worked in an orthodontic office. I started out as a receptionist and I moved up to the accounting place that we did it, that the accounting area, accounts receivable, accounts payable, insurance billing, things like that. I've held leadership positions at Manassas Park as a mentor and also have worked at a candy company where I went from the assistant to the, the visitor center to one of the people who was in charge of helping out with, or in charge of actually putting together all the events in the building. So I don't feel like moving from, like, I don't feel moving from a teacher up to an administrative position is not going to be a challenge. Obviously there's a lot of learning, but that's where you come into communicating with the other people on the board and the people who are a part of the governing body and keeping yourself open. I feel like being a teacher gives me a distinct advantage in the fact that I'm willing to learn the system. I've been willing to learn every system I've ever moved from, from Mississippi to South Carolina, to California, to Virginia and, and keep moving. And I feel like just because a teacher isn't interested in possibly becoming an administrator doesn't mean that they don't have the ability to move into that position. So I feel really asking questions, learning. The first thing I did when I applied to this position was I went online and I looked up what does a school board do? Why do they do it? How do they do it? Making sure that you continue learning and moving forward and never stopping to ask questions because obviously policies change every single day, whether it's a federal policy or a local government policy. So making sure that you're informed. And if you have a question, you don't just sit back, you ask. You make sure that you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I yield my question to Councilmember Moore, who I know has a number on his list.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Biscoe, describe for me what equity would look like in our school district. What would equity look like to you?
So equity is a great buzzword. I, I really love, like, we all toss it around. I feel like Manassas Park is already working really hard at equity, just having left it last year. Providing students with a device and having teachers scramble and work hard to find ways to provide each student with what they need, using not only that device, but the supplies that they have in the classroom to make it work for them. Making sure that students are receiving face-to-face time together to tell you what they need and working hard to be sure that you are not staying stale as an educator, but continuing to learn. As, like you said, a practitioner, you continue practicing. Equity means that everyone will get what they need and what the teacher is able to provide at the time and it will only improve with continued support from mentorship and administration. So right now, I feel like Manassas Park is the prime ground for equity. We're small, we can make the policies and things work the way that we want for our students, the ones that we have, who have higher, different needs. And using all the differences in our students as a stepping stone and not looking at it as a blockade. So being sure that our students in each classroom, the teacher knows, you have the luxury and the ability to work with what you have. Tell me what you think works best for you in your classroom.
Thank you.
Councilmember Manczyk.
What opportu, what ways do you see, could the schools and the city combine resources? It was brought up that maybe like the, the communications could be combined, like a communications position. Do you see any other ways that the schools and the cities could combine resources?
To combine resources? Like financial resource? Are, are we talking about?
Positions or?
Oh, like shared positions. Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't see why, why we couldn't have combined resources. There's lots of people who work, you know, point five hours, point eight hours and, and they have different designations. There's lots of counseling, teaching positions that are not necessarily full-time at one place, but they share, we bounce around and we move around. I know there's quite a few professionals who wouldn't mind going from place to place. It's a change of scenery, it's a change of, of venue, it gives you new people to talk to. And what better way to go ahead and build communication than sharing people? Having them go from place to place and tell you what's happening and, and communicate that way. Any sort of shared anything to save money, to provide more to our school and our children would be a benefit. I don't think there's a downside at all. And as far as communication goes, I mean, I watched it, like we moved here, like I said, five years ago, I watched it go from like, oh, we're kind of on Twitter to like, Dr. McDade is the most popular superintendent on Twitter at the time. And it was great because then all of a sudden, as a busy, working person, I could go on Facebook and see everything happening. I could go on Twitter and see everything happen. I say, let's keep moving with the communication. Let's ask some of the students to start doing things and earning some of their volunteer hours by helping out. Why not use their strengths? I can, I, my teenage children and my adult children could probably be amazing, like publicity people, because they know the insides and the outsides of all of the, of all of the technology that's occurring right now. And, and I remember when I said, well, what about Twitter? And my daughter went, are you still on Twitter? And I was like, yeah, should I not be? And she's like, ah, you might want to consider something, you know, that kind of thing. So what better way? Like, ask us what we have. Absolutely.
Councilmember Javid.
I guess that leads to my question about technology. I know our school district gives every student laptops. Do you think that hinders the educational experience of the child? That too much technology or is not a positive influence? And where, where is that balance there between the human interaction between the teachers and having assignments done?
Sure. I do strongly feel that technology is a tool to be utilized, not a babysitting device to be employed. And so I feel like each teacher has to have the opportunity to have the professional development, to learn all of the abilities of what our district offers as far as technology. I can tell you honestly, we are ahead in a lot of areas than other places. The programs we purchase, the things that we implement, the things that we do, if we could do it with integrity, well, not integrity, but if we could continue to do it with, apply it with, oh my gosh, the word escapes my lips, but with consistency, like using the programs that we purchase, they would be effective 110%. I also feel that as a tool, it's okay to put them aside and have the kids do work on paper, in a notebook, with a pencil, sometimes writing things down for students. Students who have other learning disabilities often do better with pencil and paper. They have a hard time reading on a computer, it's hard on their eyes, it's, it's difficult for them to retain the information. There's nothing wrong with balancing what we have available and utilizing it and also making sure that we're doing what's best practice for our students. I can also tell you that with this whole hybrid, I'm teaching hybrid right now, my students at home are included in my classroom on the days they're not there. I put them in breakout rooms together, they talk, they play games. We play games together as a whole classroom. If you don't know it, there's a gym kit that's almost like an Among Us game. The kids can go ahead and play together and talk and communicate. These devices offer a world in, in which our students who are now segregated at home can actually be a part of our classroom. So technology is one of those gifts that if you are able to use it correctly with Fidel, fidelity, with fidelity, then you've got yourself a gift that is never going to quit giving.
Excellent. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Biscoe, I'd love to hear your opinion, your feelings, your views on transgender athletes, particularly those that are male to female, that are competing in female athletics competitively.
Sure. I feel like as a public servant who's been hired to teach for a public school that's federally funded, that there are things put into place to help that become part of a federal law, like Title IX, obviously protects against discrimination for any sort of student. And obviously with Governor Northam signing into effect, the fact that he's telling the videoee that they have to come up with a statewide regulation to help protect students against any sort of discrimination, that that's the policy that we have to follow as a public entity. My personal thoughts and feelings on a lot of things go to the wayside when it comes to the considerations of our public service and the students and the stakeholders that we serve. So that's really honestly my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Maya.
As a school board member, how would you address the challenge of increasing parental community involvement with the schools, especially with the language barriers?
From witnessing firsthand in the schools, we have lots of things available to help bridge the gap between the communication barriers. Translators, lines where you can call and things that will translate for you. I have personally used Google Translate a million times as a teacher in order to communicate with parents when a translator is not available. I feel like making it a strong point as a teacher, I, as a, as a student in high school, when my Spanish teacher told me learning another language would be vital to growing up in this world, I never, I never even thought about it. And now I look back and I'm like, they're right. Bilingual students and bilingual families are one of our strongest assets. And so to make that a part of who we are and bring it in and, and be like, how can we help you? What can, what can we do? Maybe having the students, I mean, I know a lot of my students, even in elementary, served as translators at our parent-teacher conferences and the kids were excited to be able to do that for their parents, to be able to tell them those things. Bridging the gap, I think Manassas Park does an amazing job with sending out notices in all different languages, making sure that if we do need a translator, we do work hard to make, to make that happen. Scheduling, like the teachers, I would be at a parent-teacher conference at eight o'clock at night if that's what it took to get a translator and a parent in the same room. Addressing it is going to be one of those things of asking our students and our parents, what works best for you? We're a small enough school district where we might be able to just go ahead and say, what do you think we can do to make this better for you? We send out all of the surveys in multiple languages. We make sure that we provide the students with the translators on the screens and things like that, but there's never a stopping point. I don't feel like it's ever a stop. We're like, we're doing good enough. Like it's time, we can take a break now. But I think continually, continually canvassing our community and our, and our parents to ask them what else we can do would be the best step forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get into our third round. I don't know if we'll finish it, but we'll try. Vice Mayor Banks.
I'm going to follow up on Councilmember Hampton's question.
Can you start again and lean into your microphone?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay. I'm following up on Councilmember Hampton's question about going from practitioner to school board member. And in that, in the role of a school board member, you're going to have to make decisions of competing priorities, whether to, if teachers are raised versus hired, you know, some program or some activity is going to help students. How do you, how do you make such decisions when you have competing priorities as a school board member? What values and decision-making processes do you have to make that tough decision?
Having a team of people, I think, is your strongest asset. Being able to debate openly back and forth what you feel is the best interest, because I think it would depend on how long has it been since the teachers have had a raise? Where was our last raise point? Is this program going to be costly over a long-term period of time or is this a purchase that maybe will help the teachers in the long run anyway? So it's a support system? Like what benefit is the program that we're going to implement to our students and then to our teachers overall? And, and at what point do we say like, yes, but giving the teachers a raise would be more beneficial and this could possibly be a program that we put off until the next fiscal year? So not having all the information on what the, the program might be or what the situation would be, you would, I, I feel like you would use your assets and you would talk to your team and talk about what your, what your thoughts and feelings are after researching each and every option that were available. Just because I'm a teacher, obviously doesn't mean that my priorities are give all the teachers raises right now every year. It's, I'm a parent first in our city and I feel like what's in the best interest of our students is where you go with any decision. Does that cover? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hampton.
So what do you see, other than, you know, we always have budget issues. Money is always an issue no matter where, unless you're, you know, got a well of money that comes, money just keeps popping out. Other than that, what are the, some of the major pain points or issues that you believe is facing the city in the upcoming year? And as well as any thoughts on dealing with or facing those issues?
The city itself or the?
I'm sorry, the school.
The schools. Okay. Sorry. I, I feel like we've gotten away from where we started. I remember reading the book, The Little School, The Little School That Could and thinking, wow, they, they really went out the box because they had such a small district, they wanted to do the best for their families and that's what they did. And so I feel as if it's time to get back to that and really looking at what do we[1760.82] And so, I feel as if it's time to get back to that and really looking at, what do we do well and why do we do it well? And how can we keep doing that? If you don't mind, I might have to cheat and look at my notes. I do feel like if, if we could go ahead and prioritize a lot of the things that I think everybody's probably already said before, teacher retention is huge. I know students who have had a brand-new teacher every year from kindergarten, and not, like I said, not taking away from new teachers, but that's a, it's a rough thing to keep having happen when, when teachers keep leaving. Looking at our building of interpersonal relationships and school climate, having a more focused vision of what we feel like our school should look like. Obviously, each principal and vice-principal is responsible for creating that in their schools, but what should that look like? Giving them a clear goal, a focus and, and having, we're all the cougars, and that was always the coolest part for my kids. We're like, that was great. Like, they're cougars from kindergarten all the way up until they graduate from school. But having a shared purpose and using shared language from kindergarten all the way up until you're seniors in school. And then, having, having our, our school body, our school board and our governing body talk and work together. I mean, I can't tell you how many times it goes back and forth. Social media is one of those two-edged swords, right? It's great for communication. It's also great for rumor mills. I, I can't believe how many times I watched it go back and forth. And the adults in our community feed into it, and there's nothing positive that comes from that. So, just having more, like, it's almost like when mom and dad get together and the kids have been, like, playing them against each other, and they finally get together and they talk, and they're like, "Is this what you said? And no, that's not what I said." And then the kids have no footing to stand on. Just having that where you build relationships. You have shared committees. You have shared values and ideals and goals, and you work together to build it. I don't know that anything that builds community and strength more than coming together to, to achieve a goal as a group.
Thank you. Excellent questions. In fact, I don't have one, so I will defer again to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How would you increase the number of minority teachers in the applicant pool if we desire to have a diverse teacher-student population?
Sure. I don't know that we don't desire to. I feel like, I feel like that's one of those, also like closing the achievement gap. That's one of those questions that almost every school district in our nation is facing right now. You know, you have, we have, we have a district that's over 70% of, of students of color and yet probably 20% of the teachers also in that category. And so, that's not just us, that's national. And you, you sit there and you think about, well, other larger school districts have the benefit of being able to offer a teacher a contract right then and there at those career fairs, because they know how many teachers they're probably going to need. Whereas Manassas Park, we may not know. It depends on when the teachers hand in their contracts and when, when they sign their promise to return. And if they don't, then you're kind of going based upon a pool of who you have, and by the time you get to those, they may have already been hired out. I think improving our school climate, our teacher mentorship programs, offering more opportunities for all of our teachers, not just, you know, the ones we have, but the ones who are coming in to go ahead and take on real quality leadership positions in the school that matter, I think that makes it attractive to other people in general. Just increasing our, our desirability to work for us in general would offer that for a start. Having a high turnover rate makes it difficult to attract a lot of people for a lot of reasons. And so, if, if nationally, we're struggling to attach, to attract teachers of color to any school district, I feel like we're not in any different boat, but we have the strength in our size to go ahead and, and try things that maybe bigger districts can't.
Thank you, Ms. Bisco.
You know, I don't think we're going to make it through this round. I think we need to go right to our closing statement now. If you could limit yourself to two minutes, please.
Yeah, absolutely. So, as a parent of Manassas Park City students and, and a taxpayer, taxpayer and a former teacher here, I feel like we have something of quality. We have something here that I've never really experienced in all the other places that we have lived throughout the country, and I think it's worth fighting for. I feel like we stay here as a family because we love the community, we love the people, we love the schools. And I know that our schools are capable of more. We're capable of providing more, we're capable of driving more, and we're capable of, of learning more to give the best to who really matters, which is our students. In the end, it's not about what we want, it's about what we have to provide as a quality learning and education opportunity for the kids in our city. And I firmly believe, and I have believed it from the day that I walked into my first school board meeting until the day that I walked out of the last one that I left, our school system will bring more people, more businesses and more revenue, because I can tell you, the first thing that parents look for, or even people who are not parents but are even considering being parents, is the school system. And we have something special. So, we have something worth really putting a lot of effort into.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We appreciate every single applicant that came tonight. It was such a joy and a pleasure to listen to each one of you answer questions and tell us why you want to be on the school board. So, thank you. As I said before, June 1st is the public hearing. Feel free to have, you know, your supporters send in statements or come in person or electronically, however is most convenient, and then we vote on the 15th. And contact Ms. Lena Connor, city clerk, if you have any procedural detail questions. Thank you. And again, thank you to the governing body for all the wonderful questions that you asked. And Keith, thank you for being the timekeeper. And Lena, thank you for all the organization work you've done. That concludes it for this evening. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abes? No? No.